Gilbert.
Present.
Sliger.
Present.
Busicki. Gonzalez Thomas.
Present.
Hieros.
Here.
Arlandu.
Here.
All right, thank you. We will now do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Tom, are there items to remove or otherwise adjust to the agenda?
Yes, we are going to amend the discussion section of our agenda tonight, and we're just going to move item 8.1 to the end after 8.3.
Anybody have any concerns?
No.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. All right, we want to celebrate some students from Hooverwood. Howie's Heroes is a special recognition that celebrates students who go above and beyond what's expected, showing kindness, effort, leadership, and a positive attitude in school. Being named one of Howie's Heroes is a proud moment that shines a spotlight on our students. Please, Malcolm, welcome Max and Finn to the podium. Don't be shy. Do you have a stepstool? Someone's got to have a stepstool or a bench or something. It might be. Just making sure it's green. Do you have a handheld? There you go, handheld.
Come on over here. I'll hold it for you. You want to introduce yourself? Go ahead and give them your name. Okay.
Good job.
I am Finn. I am fourth grade. I'm Max Meadows. I'm in fifth grade. I like sports, and I like helping kids help with math, and I like reading a lot.
Awesome.
A couple of special highlights for Max. This is said by one of his teachers. Max and a friend saw another student sitting alone at lunch. They were worried the student would feel sad sitting alone, so they decided to sit with him instead. Max is a brand-new student to Hooverwood, and he is already making sure everyone in our school community feels included and belongs. Way to go, Max. Finn has been an excellent example of positive first-grade behavior. He's working so hard at school. He's been politely reminding people to look on the bright side when doing hard things. How refreshing. On the way back from lunch, Finn picked up two things that had been dropped by peers while walking in. Way to go, Finn.
Who?
Yeah, just want to do a picture.
Picture?
More picture, please.
Yes.
Oh, boy.
Finn, you got it.
He just came from wrestling.
I know, he's great.
Yeah, go ahead, get in there. Get in there.
One, two, already done. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. All right, thank you. Congratulations.
Good job.
Congrats. Nice job.
Thank you.
Got Finn. All right, public comment. So, welcome to the meeting of the Board of Education. If anyone wishes to address the board this evening, I have a form here for you to fill out and submit to the board. Holly has them. Please put your full name and address on the form. In general, the board will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during public comment. This does not mean we do not value, do not take your concerns or comments seriously. The board values active community participation in district endeavors and encourages people to engage with the district using appropriate channels and systems designed with your input in mind. Board members are not involved in day-to-day operations of the district and cannot engage in district business individually. If you have specific questions or would like to further engage with the district, you may submit your questions using the link on the website, and the appropriate staff member will communicate with you. Superintendent Kim, are you going to walk us through the rules, or are you Holly today? Holly?
I believe you are.
It's right here. I'll read it. How's that? Okay, speakers will be called up in order of submission. The first form received is the first person invited to speak. When your name is called, please come to the podium so that you can be heard. All individuals speaking will be limited to three minutes. A three-minute timer will be started once you are settled at the podium. At any time during the meeting, written comments may be submitted to Holly. And keep in mind, if we end up, I don't know how many we have, but if we have...
We have six.
Six, okay, then we probably won't get to 45 minutes with our three-minute timer. Okay. Speakers should conduct themselves with civility and respect toward others, so please call up the first person.
President Meadows, the first person is Howard Miller.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak out. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a former high school, Batavia High School teacher, retired in 2011. Right now, in my retirement, I'm involved with rapid-response teams in the St. Charles, Geneva team, as well as the West Chicago team. What we are is we're on call to go out and look for ICE, Border Patrol, and HSI, and the FBI, and the whole group, referred to as MIGRA by the immigrant community. We're not allowed to interfere. We're there to just make sure that somebody's not being overly abused and recorded. As you know, the city of Batavia last week passed an ordinance to prohibit MIGRA from using city lots to stage. King County Board yesterday made a provision to do the same thing. The best thing, in my opinion, the best thing this board can do to teach students, and that's what we're here for and what we did, is the importance of standing up for what's right and honoring all citizens of Batavia, that they have equal rights, and we'll do whatever we can to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Casaldo Cuevas.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. My name is Casaldo Cuevas. I am from Aurora, though I have friends that have kids in this school district, and that's why I'm here. I'm speaking on their behalf. We're living in different times right now, dangerous times, where people's rights are not being respected. Due process is not being met. And, you know, I read through your mission statement, your vision statement, and your commitment. And one stuck out to me: "We commit to a safe and inclusive learning environment for all students." That is your commitment. That is the commitment of the community also, to keep people safe. If you pass an ordinance or a resolution to keep ICE from your property, you'd be in line with the Trust Act, just like Aurora passed it, Evanston, other cities, Chicago. They've passed similar legislation. We at the city of Aurora also passed it. I am the deputy mayor of Aurora, too. I deal with these problems on a daily basis. I have seen firsthand where a parent is ripped out of a car, and their kids are left in there. I don't want to see that on school grounds. I've seen it on school grounds. It's heartbreaking. And I think it's the duty of everyone to do the right thing. Don't look at your heart only. Look at the law. The Trust Act states that your resources are yours. They are not of the federal government. They are your resources. And it's up to this board to keep the students safe so that they can learn. My wife is a teacher. The one thing she hears, I'm scared to come to school. That shouldn't be. Kids should never be afraid to come to school. I know that some people say you're going to give them false hope by passing something like this. But actually, you're giving them some hope because you're showing that you have compassion. You're showing that you have a heart, and you're doing the right thing. And I urge that this board does pass something for the safety of the kids. Thank you.
You.
Our next speaker is Jeremy Denedio.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am a resident of Batavia, a parent, proud parent to two BPS 101 students, one of which you'll meet in a minute or two. I'd like to commend the board for discussing and exploring the options available to it involving, you know, an anti-ICE or an ICE-free school zone for our students. I'd like to encourage you to continue to explore those options, but I'd really want to encourage you to take action. I'd like you to look beyond what the Safe Schools for All Act provides and go further. Create a policy that protects our students and protects them even more than what the state is providing for within that law. I think what, you know, the prior speaker said, that these are truly unusual times, and they do require special enactments and actions by leaders like you guys. And I want to allow all students the opportunity for safe, inclusive, and quality education. And I think that we all agree on that here, and that's why you probably took the, you know, the opportunity to join this board and provide that for all students. So, please, take the job seriously and do what you can to really stand by your mission statement and provide that safe, inclusive, and quality education for all students in Batavia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Spencer Denedio.
Good evening. I am, I'm a, well, first of all, I'm Spencer Demisho. I'm a 14-year-old eighth grader at RMS. I know I will never put it as elegantly as my dad put it, but I'm just here to kind of speak in support of this. I guess I'm here to speak in support of a policy expand, see, I'm going to start at the beginning. I'm here to speak in support of a policy that would limit ICE operations in our school. I know Illinois just passed a law that would designate schools as ICE-free, but I want to see a policy expanding upon this. I know that some laws have already been passed to limit this, but I've talked to my friends. I've talked to my community. We want to see action from our community. We want to see action from our leaders and not the state. Well, no, we still want to see the state action, sorry. But we also want to see action from our local representatives. We want to see action from everyone, everyone here. We've seen action from the city. We want to see action from the Park District. We want to see action from anywhere possible. Now here, sorry. Please give my friends that, like, security going to school, knowing that not only their state supports them, give them that security that their whole Park District, not Park District, school board supports them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kate Cuneo.
Hello, my name is Kate. I have three children and Batavia Public Schools. And I will try to not be repetitive because most people already said what I wanted to say. So, I did send you an email earlier about the HB 3247, which does require, and it takes effect in 2026, that school boards create a policy, and it outlines exactly what they need to include in that policy. But in addition to that, I'd like to see signage on school property highlighting that ICE needs to identify themselves, needs to have a judicial warrant, and a written purpose for why they are there. And they should all, this policy also needs to include training for our, all of our staff, not just the teachers, for if they see ICE, because if we pass this, but we don't give anyone the tools on how to enforce it, it doesn't mean much, and it's not going to help much. So, I'm really urging to expand on it, like everyone else has suggested, and make sure you include mandatory training as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Parker Junkus.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name is Parker Junkus. I live in Aurora, but we're Batavia School District. I have a young daughter, so she'll be going to Batavia Schools. I really was just wanting to come and show my support for an ICE-free policy in our schools. It's really your responsibility to adopt a really strong policy that protects the students and aligns with the law itself. As you know, Illinois passed a law, the Safe Schools for All Act, and this was signed into effect in August, and it will go into effect in 2026, so there's time. But as most people have said, you really should expand on this. But some of the key points are ICE can only be on campus with a warrant. You have to have identification, and they have a written statement of purpose. But really, there should be more than that because these kids, it should be so safe for them. They should really just know that they feel comfortable. They shouldn't have to worry about these. They're young. They're not adults. They shouldn't have to worry about this. Illinois is free education for all, so it doesn't matter what your immigration status is. You should get an education. And even if, it doesn't affect just those that have a questionable immigration status, right? It affects everyone. There's going to be kids that were born here and obviously know they're not affected. They're going to see this, and they're going to be concerned for their friends or themselves. Like, why would we allow masked agents with weapons on our property? That's just crazy, in my opinion. So, I really hope you guys take into strong consideration the law. It's not really an option. It is a requirement. It's more also that we hope that you build on it and continue to grow and show your community some faith and listen to us for what we all want. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, no more, correct?
Let's conclude the public comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, BPS partners, Mr. Ray.
Hi, Board. I'll be brief. In regards to the request for an immigration enforcement resolution, I'm not going to belabor the point, and I'm going to let the public comments speak for themselves, but I would like to reiterate two specific things. Number one, it is the right of every child, regardless of immigration status, to access a free public K-12 education. Number two, the fear and uncertainty of the times we live in are indeed impacting our students and our staff. The BEA knows this because both students and staff have told us this. If this is something the board chooses to take action on, I would offer you this model resolution from the National Education Association for your consideration. You should have copies being passed around right now. The language of this resolution does two things. First, it acknowledges the policies we already have in place, and second, if adopted, it would serve as a powerful reminder to our students, staff, and their families that we will continue to prioritize and are committed to ensuring a safe and stable learning environment to the greatest extent possible. If any board member would like more information on this model resolution or any of the resources available through both the IEA and the NEA, all you have to do is ask. Additionally, at last month's board meeting, there was a rigorous discussion on district cellphone policy. Many of our association members heard that discussion and walked away with very different takeaways as to what the intent of that discussion was. I know that some information about current policies will be provided by some of our building administrators at next month's board meeting, but I would kindly ask that if, in fact, the board is looking at changing or modifying these policies, that you actively seek formal input from our members. And if the association needs to gather that data for you, all you have to do is ask. Finally, the Batavia Education Association and our union siblings and BESPA are working together in support of the Illinois Education Association's Feed Illinois initiative by contributing to the Thanksgiving Blessing Baskets program and the Healing Hunger Weekend Backpack Meal Program. Our efforts are in solidarity with local unions across the state in order to ensure that no student goes hungry. And it's not just the BEA and BESPA. It's awesome to see all the similar efforts that are happening in, like, every building in our district. It's a beautiful thing. All of that being said, I'd like to personally thank our community outreach coordinator, Amy Nelson, for all the help and assistance she has provided as we've undertaken this initiative and for all the great work that she continues to do. She's an absolute rock star, and our district and community are incredibly lucky to have her. So, let's all continue to keep showing up, supporting one another, lifting up our community, not just during the holiday season, but every day of the year. Go Bulldogs. Good night and good luck.
All right, we do not have a BESPA representative tonight, and student ambassadors, Kaia and Grace. The floor is yours.
Hey, did you miss us? It's been a long time since we've been back together. All righty. Well, thanks for having us. We're so excited to be back in full action together. First of all, we just want to say we're excited to see the many us's come in in the coming future, see the juniors that are going to take our positions when we graduate in May. Very excited to graduate in May, and we're excited to see who is to fill our spots. So, as our usual format goes, for sports, we've had a lot of things happening. Winter sports are starting and fall sports are ending, so we have a lot of wrap-ups and startups. For winter sports starting, we have wrestling and baseball. There's some pic, or, not baseball, basketball. There's some pictures on there. Our teams are all getting together, doing bonding activity. Preseason's pretty much ending, and they're going into full effect, but it's pretty exciting. The fall sports are over, besides football, which we have a fun update on that later, but we can see the picture in pink. That's for tennis. Their season just ended. We have esports. They've been super successful this year. So, led by seniors Dom Allen and Bryant Johnson, the BHS Mario Kart team qualifies for state finalists at NIU next weekend. David Williams and Dylan Mayo qualified for the IHSEA state semifinalists in Brawlhalla this Friday, which will be representing the Batavia Esports. We also want to congratulate the Marvel Rivals esports team, led by seniors Andrew Delabella, Liam Cervantes, and Jacob Cooper for their victory in Romeo Ville. They're going to be moving on to IHSEA state semifinals on November 23rd at NIU. And then, we also have a lot of cross-country wins that have been happening. The girls' cross-country team won 13th place at the IHSEA state finals, and then junior Avery Hacker placed second overall, tying the program record for the highest-placing individual in state finals. Our boys also had four runners come away with personal records. That would be Gavin, Aaron, Luke, and Peter. State, which made it the first varsity team in Batavia history to have all top seven under 16 minutes, and the first team in Batavia history to have all top five under 15 minutes and 30 seconds for the three miles. This is the second-highest placing in Batavia boys' team ever. And then Kaia had a personal comment from a member.
So, I got a text today saying, "We getting hype from the turkey trot. Add that in for comedic effect."
It works. They're very excited about that one. On top of that, we're also very excited for our football team. They are going on Saturday against St. Rita for state semifinals. If they win this, they're going to state. We all have to be there, cheer on our football team. There's great spirit there, and we're excited for them. There's also been IHSEA honorable mentions to Gavin Pecor and Ryan Myers, so they're doing awesome this year. With that, we have our clubs and events, also a lot of those. It's been a busy, busy season. Currently, there's an attendance challenge happening at the high school, and the seniors are winning. We won for this term, which just got to say, it's pretty awesome. We're the best.
We're the most improved.
Well, it's for the most improved, so that means we're starting from...
No one showed up at the start, and now we're getting there.
We're getting there. We're getting there, but improvement is still great. There's also a lot of bake sales happening. There's a lot of school spirit there. So, Key Club is holding one for the Kwanzaa Neuroscience Research Foundation. They raised, like, over $200 the last time. They also raised, I think, around $800 for UNICEF, so go Key Club. Love Key Club.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah. And then also, there's a Women in Business event happening. That always is a huge success. It's run by our counselors at the high school. It's not only business, but also just women leaders in different fields, so that'll be happening this week. BSU had an Adolian dance group event. I don't know if I pronounced that right, but I did see pictures, and it looked really fun. They had drums and different dancing lessons, so that was awesome. Youth in Government, that's the picture on the top left. They went to their pre-ledge session and presented bill ideas. The team is growing really, really well, and they're very passionate about what they're doing. As always, Girl Up is holding their annual Single Moms Drive this winter. We're still looking for donations. This is for any self-care items. It goes to United Way. There's a picture of me painting a box in the top middle. We have those boxes all around the school, but if you want more information on how community members can get involved, reach out to Deja Harris. She'll have more information. There's also the NHS Snowman Showdown, so they're collecting different food drive items, and then they're going to have the different teachers run around the school in snowman costumes, so it's awesome. And then this week, there's a Skelastic Bowl Meet. That'll be great, so lots of club activities.
Okay. First, to start off, raise your hand if you saw The Little Mermaid. Tell me I did amazing. Yeah, that happened. And the next show actually started, auditions were on Tuesday, and I'm assistant directing that one, so everyone should also come see that one. It'll be pretty cool. It's hilarious. It's called The Government Inspector. All three, band, choir, and orchestra, had their music concerts. And Winter Wonderland is coming up, where everyone performs in a big, like, two-hour-long concert altogether. And so, I don't know. I think it's one of my favorite things. Festival of Carols, you'll see us last year. That's on December 12th and 13th, where we all just kind of dress up and sing a bunch of tunes, and it's really pretty. Marching Band is over, and they went to BOA, and they actually did really good. Grace wouldn't tell me the score that they got, but I think it was really good. And we had an improv show. This is actually really early in October, but we brought in the Oswego Improv Team, and they opened for us, and I thought it was really, really cool and really nice. Okay, and RMS, some things. Their basketball season is starting. That's actually my little brother up there. Isn't he so cute? Don't tell him I said that. Show Choir season is starting. Oh, that's also at the high school. That's where I was before this, and that's where I'm about to go back to after this. Middle Schools were in the musical. That's Alice Mammego right there. I love her to bits and pieces. She's amazing. And they had auditions for Legally Blonde, and... I love Legally Blonde. I know. I didn't tell you that. Wrestling is starting. Their cross-country team's very successful, and they had a Veterans Day assembly. And it was, it was a very nice assembly, if I say so myself.
All right. On a not-so-fun note, we have some info on AI policy within the school district. I think this has been an issue that we see pretty prevalently at the high school, just with students using it. A lot of teachers definitely have expressed concerns because it's, A, hard to flag them, and when they do, it's hard to keep the people who are using it and aren't using it. So, we just want to bring that to the attention, that that's definitely an issue happening, both among students and teachers, with what's being used, what assignments are going out, how things are being graded. I know I personally, in my own opinion, do not like the usage of AI, and I think it definitely is detrimental to our education and our future successes. So, we just want to bring that to the attention and make sure you guys know about it. Kaia, do you have any other notes?
We don't necessarily have a solution for any of this, but we just thought that you guys should know about it because it is happening every day. We hear about it, so...
Yeah, quite a lot. But that's all we got.
That's all. We love you.
Thank you. Okay, consent again, agenda. According to our board policy, we designate a portion of the action items on the agenda as a consent agenda for those items usually, that usually do not require extensive discussion before board action. These items are generally routine, recurring, and can be grouped together for efficiency. Steve, would you please walk us through it?
Yes, absolutely. And before I start, I just want to reiterate what was said at the beginning of the meeting with 5.8. We had some dates wrong in there. The correction is that the work will be done in 2026 and with completion for the 26, '27 school year. 5.1 and 5.2 is the approval of the October 21st, 2025 meeting and closed-session meeting minutes. 5.3 is the approval of the November 6th, 2025 special meeting minutes. 5.4 is our monthly personnel report. 5.5 is the monthly payrolls and bills. 5.6 is the destruction of closed-session recordings from April 9th. the destruction of closed session recordings from April 9th and April 24th of 2024. We have an abundance of donations, which we're most appreciative of, thank you to Stage, the Dunham Fund, BYA, Ruth Coyne, Bob Coomer, Office Depot, Beefy multiple times, three times over, and Mary Bruno for all of their donations, thank you, thank you, thank you. 5.8 is the aforementioned authorized application for the fiscal year 26 School Maintenance Project Grant. 5.9 is the approval of the 2026, 2027 school calendar, one of Brad's favorite items. 5.10 is the Batavia High School Graduation Agreement with NIU from 2027 to 2029, and finally, 5.11 is the approval of our consent agenda.
All right. Board, any questions, comments?
I, I have a question about the grant 5.8, is this like an annual thing, or is this like a one-time grant you can apply for?
It's annual, yeah.
Annual, okay. Do you want to just, there's people here, you want to just, would someone want to just elaborate what the grant is?
Josh can do that. So, that grant is something that the state of Illinois allows school districts to apply for, for capital projects. So, this particular item was already approved by the board at the last meeting when Mark presented, and this is just a way to get some funding to help with that, and it's a $50,000 match, so we've got to at least do a project of $50,000, and then the state matches that.
Thank you, Josh.
No problem.
Kristin looks like she's ready to ask a question.
I had a question that I emailed, but the graduation agreement with NIU, the reason for the three years, if that's just typical, or if there's a discounted rate if, for a longer contract?
It's, it's pretty typical for those to have a three-year contract with them, that's what we've done in the past, we'd like to lock in the date because that place is so popular, that you don't want to lose your spot, otherwise we could kick to some other day, so that's why we're doing that. The biggest change with this contract is the need for ticketing, so we've never used ticketing before, there's unlimited tickets, but we're going to have to go through a ticketing system because NIU requires it now. So it'll be a little bit more because printing out tickets.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve all items in the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
So moved by Aaron.
Second.
Second by Danielle, Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Meadows?
Yes.
Sliger?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Gerrols?
Yes.
Kilberg?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Reports, four reports, come.
Reports have been presented to the board in our board book, does anyone have any questions?
Okay. Next is treasurer report.
The expenditures and revenues for the month of October are included, as long as well as the investments and our fund balances, and nothing out of the ordinary, other than that, report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? All right. BPSU, Steve? You're trying to, Rochambeau, who's going to talk?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Very planned out, Craig.
I can tell.
This is me, Shelby, our director of professional learning, and we're here to talk a little bit about BPSU, if you want to hit the...
Slides?
The slide, that would be awesome.
Is it the one that's in the report?
The one that's in the report, you got it. And we also have a few special guests who are, one is a BPSU graduate, and one is a current BPSU participant, and they'll be sharing a little bit at the end. So, BPSU is something that came out of our contract bargaining in a couple contracts ago, and it really, it really was one of those things that was a beautiful thing in the bargaining process, of interest-based bargaining, where we had a problem of, we wanted to address professional learning that was focused on the right work, while doing so, not having our staff members necessarily go into debt, because the traditional model in schools, as many of you know, is that teachers and staff members acquire degrees which can cost $20,000, $30,000, and that moves them over in the pay scale, and then they can earn more money, and they can do that, they could do that from a myriad of different schools and things like that, and so we came up with a very creative solution to kind of meet the needs of professional learning, increasing compensation, and kind of some unintended needs of like building community, of learning together and things like that with this solution. And so this is something that came out of bargaining, and I feel very fortunate in my role that I was a part of like being able to create that with my colleague Ming here, as well as our adjunct professor over here, Brad Newkirk, and so we serve as the primary instructors, and it's really been a blast. So what exactly is BPSU, if we can go to the next slide? This is like a very, very general structure of what it's all about, it's a, I would compare it to a two-year hybrid master's program, meaning we have some in-person meetings, if you ever drive by or come by ARJAC on a Wednesday, pretty much 34 Wednesdays of the school year, which is pretty much every Wednesday of the school year, we are in here...
Other than the homecoming parade.
Other than the homecoming parade, which we learned year one, Ally would remember that. And there's one other time, oh, we have our, our thing that we do, our culminating activity, which Ming will talk about a little bit, that's another time we don't meet here, but we're here from 4:00 to 6:00 every Wednesday, and we run two cohorts simultaneously. So year one was just one cohort, that was kind of our learning year, and right now, we're in the midst of cohort six is in year two, and cohort seven is in year one. And so they meet every other week, in between weeks, they have assignments, again, if you've taken any kind of online hybrid course, you typically have readings, you make posts, and then your classmates comment on it. And so that's what kind of happens in, in, in one of our core ways we operate is we read different texts, am I jumping into your stuff already?
Yeah, that's great, you're doing, yeah.
This is what we do.
You're on fire.
And, I'm on fire, right, here we go. So, and when we read those core texts, there's a lot of off, not in-class discussion, but then we also sometimes discuss the in-class. So if you're looking at like the general structure, this is what it's really about. The, the main focus of this two-year hybrid master's program is teacher leadership, and what we're trying to do is build a community of teacher leaders in our system to really move all the right work forward. And so you see that embedded in, in both years. In year one, we really focus on maybe the classroom improvement and that sort of change, and, and, I don't know, I think it's probably gotten more intense, Ally, than what you experienced, but we, we give a lot more like, we meet in class and we say, "Okay, we've, we've talked about this strategy, we've modeled the strategy, we want you to go try it in your class, and then come back and tell us how it went." And what's really fun for Ming and I is people, staff members have videoed stuff and then brought it back and showed to us, or they'll be like, "Hey, I'm doing this in class on this, on Tuesday at first block, would you come and, come and check it out?" And so we get to experience that kind of stuff. In year two, we want to take that, that sphere of influence beyond just their own classroom and say, "How, how are you impacting the people around you?" In our system, you'll see the third thing, it says Teams and PLC, we are a school district that believes that the best way for us to support our kids and move learning forward for our students is collaboration, right? And so we want our teacher leaders to influence their teams to collaborate around the right work and the right things. And it's funny now, because we're now in cohort seven, and so we do a lot of things where it's like, hey, we talk about this, we talk about this concept, we interact about it, now we want you to go back and talk to your team about it. Well, if you were a Spanish teacher at Batavia High School in year two, you might have had one teacher coming back and talking to your team about this concept, and then like in cohort four, we had two more Spanish teachers, and so then they did, kind of had the same conversations, and you can kind of see how, and I think we still have Spanish teachers, we pretty much had the whole Spanish department, I don't know why I brought that up, but it's really fun to see how it kind of spreads, and so we really believe strongly, and it's embedded in both years, about working as professional learning communities, and what is the right work during the collaborative time that is carved out of the teacher's schedules to again, move student learning forward. And then lastly, in year one, we just start tapping into a culminating research project, I'm going to try not to say much about it, because you're going to talk about that, right? I won't, I won't say anything more than that. And then in the last year, we really focus on the application of that action research, and I'll stop there. So let's go to the next slide.
So Steve already gave you a sneak peek a little bit about some of our core learning experiences, but on the slide, these five, quality feedback, high-quality pedagogical techniques, professional learning communities, collective efficacy, and reflection are really embedded into each of the learning experiences each Wednesday that we're together, because we believe that if we equip our teachers with these great teacher leader skills, they can take it back, be awesome leaders for their teams, and really awesome leaders for their students. So to break down the core learning experiences even more, diving deep into it, we offer two trainings for our teachers, the first one is Adaptive Schools, they get to go four days in the summertime, where they learn about what are effective facilitation strategies for groups, and we've had people say like, "Oh, I was really skeptical about it," or "I'm a psych, like what will I get out of it?" And we'll get emails like, "Okay, that was the best part of BPSU, I take so much of what I did from that and helped facilitate my teams, my 504 meetings, IP, all that." And then the second thing that they get, that's an official training, is Crucial Conversations, so maybe some of you are familiar with the work of Crucial Conversations, and we work through what are those hard conversations, because what we've discovered is that it's really easy to be like, "Well, can you believe that Steve did this, blah, 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 blah?"
She does that a lot.
A lot, yeah. But what's even harder, but even more effective, is to have the conversation in person, like, "Hey Steve, this is what happened." And so we want people to be open and aware of these conversations and not hide from them, so that we can function really honestly and cohesively together. Then, the second part is the leading teams, so we have Curriculum Week, where our BPSU leaders would facilitate and lead those teams, so sometimes you would have a first-grade teacher leading eighth-grade math, or a high school Spanish teacher leading third-grade ELA, and it's not about the content, but about building the capacity as a leader. And this last year, they got an even more interesting task, where they got to present an institute day, or lead one of their SLT meetings, and just continuously equipping our teachers with leadership opportunities. Then the next part is the different texts that we read, Steve gave a little hint about some of them, but some of our favorites are Learning by Doing, which is a PLC book, Dare to Lead, Brene Brown, she's a favorite, maybe some of you are familiar with her, Upstream by Dan Heath, he's half of the dynamic duo of the Heath Brothers, they broke up during that brief stint, so he wrote Upstream on his own. Mindset by Carol Dweck, and we've actually had a professor come zoom in and talk to us from University of Houston, she studied under Carol at Stanford University, got her PhD, and did 20 years of mindset research, so our students got to benefit from the expert of a actual researcher who's doing this work. And then Think Again by Adam Grant, who you're probably familiar with his work as a Penn professor. Then, our culminating event is that our BPSUers, they do a five-to-seven-minute TED Talk style of their project that they've been working on. The first year, we were like, "Five to seven minutes, five to seven minutes," and they would go on like for 15 minutes, kind of like what's happening now. But, we learned and got it like even more tight and tight. And this last cohort, Steve and I were talking that, they're only really required to do two cycles of learning, where they're like, "Okay, I'm making a prediction about if this strategy will work with my students, let's try it, and then let's do another cycle." And this last cohort, they did multiple cycles, like three, four, five, to continuously try to figure out what's working, what's not working for students, so that was super cool. And so, this is like very high level, as you can tell, this composite, we celebrate our grads with this certificate at the end, so it's proudly presented to them at the end, I'm sure Ally is hanging up proudly in her EC room. And then, this, there, a lot of hard work goes into these two years, so on the left is the composite of each of the students, and their cohort, and who they are, and it goes in, out in our CNI monthly newsletter, saying, "Hey, give a shout-out to this cohort, give them a high-five," all that kind of stuff, so that's really fun. So then, our action research, you noticed Brad right here, he's coaching one of our teachers, Nikki at RMS. Brad doesn't really like this picture, but you know, it's, we think it's great, so it's still up there. And what, this is a process that they go through with their action research, so it's really cool, kind of what I illustrated earlier about the different cycles.
Just to give you an idea of how many people have participated, in BPSU, you can see the numbers here, the number on the far left is year cohort one through seven. In year one, we had 30 students, and we realized that was like a little bit too much to manage, and so we've kind of found our sweet spot between 20 and 23 students. But you'll also notice on the far right, that's the number of our staff member who, staff members who have applied. And so, obviously, there is a massive demand from our teaching staff for this program, the last two years were about as many staff members who have applied to be in this. And what we have to do is we sit down, Brad, myself, Drew Ray, and Sarah Barrett, we sit down and we do a draw, and so it's done, there's, there's no bias, there's no, any, anything like that, and we do a random draw of our staff members, and if your name is drawn, you get in the program. And so, we're very proud of the fact that it's got some stickiness, where people still want to be a part of BPSU. And I think we have a couple, you can skip that one, and then just, we've just, this is just highlighting, we're going to have two people come up here in, in a minute here, but there's been some really great benefits to BPSU. One of the things that we really didn't even anticipate was just the community that we built. That picture there, which is probably up there without their permission, but they did send it to us over district email, so maybe there's some way we can do that, but what happened is like one cohort, one cohort, we had two staff members who were pregnant and having children, they ended up having their children, and then they became like fast friends, they were not in the same building, not even in the, like in, you know, they were across the district at all. They became really good friends because of BPSU, and then like their kid's first play date was with each of their children, and they sent that photo to us, just as an illustration of the great community that gets built with these tightly knit groups in BPSU. That's a copy of an original Leadership Manifesto, it's one of our mindset culminating assignments, where people get to be creative and determine like, "What is my commitment as I've learned through this?" There's tons of collaboration, and then something that's really, really important to us is, we don't have staff members going out and getting rando classes and masters and things like that, they're actually getting focused work on the work that we believe in, aligned to our strategic plan, to best support our students. And so we, we have our, our teacher leaders that go through this, really focusing on the right work, and we're really proud of that. So, I believe, with that, we have two special people here, I'm going to call Ally Bealski, who cannot wait to speak in public. First, she, poor Ally, she was one of the people that were in BPSU Cohort One, and we kind of learned by doing, right? We made mistakes along the way, we survived the pandemic together, we were in person, and we were online, and all sorts of things, so she's just going to tell a little bit of her story.
My name is Ally Bealski, and I'm currently in my 14th year of teaching at the Early Childhood Center. I have a specialized instructional classroom in the morning and a blended classroom in the afternoon. I was part of BPSU Cohort One, which I joined during my eighth year of teaching here in Batavia. For many years, continuing my education kind of felt out of reach, I was a single mom, and financially it just wasn't possible. I had also moved to Batavia in 2014, away from my hometown, which meant I no longer had access to like easy childcare. So it really put continuing my education really out of perspective. Between 2017 and 2022, I went from being the youngest teacher on staff at the Early Childhood Center to the most experienced teacher because of retirements. So, there was a lot of time when I just naturally was pushed into leadership roles, and we were hiring a lot of new teachers. So we've grown, we've grown so much since then, and I think that being part of BPSU was so important. When the opportunity came up, I was generally excited because I truly believed that that program was out of reach for me. The cohort model removed so many obstacles. I could learn in my own district, stay close to my family, and build skills that directly supported my rapidly growing early childhood program that I was a part of. One of the most valuable parts of BPSU was the learning opportunities that connected educators across all levels, early childhood through high school. The kind of professional development is very rare to find, usually we're at things and they're like, "Well, just kind of make it seem like early childhood," or it's, you know, "Make it seem like high school." It allowed us to interact with colleagues beyond our own buildings and learn from each other's perspectives. The leadership-focused workshops and outside resources were especially meaningful, they helped me refine my delegation skills and support new staff while applying what I was learning directly to my team. Although I didn't have the chance to work directly with Angie Sutherland during BPSU, several of my coworkers did, and they often shared how supportive and accommodating she was to them. Even from a distance, her guidance mattered, and she consistently worked to find resources and supports that aligned with topics teachers were exploring in their projects. That impact carried throughout the entire cohort. My time in BPSU was just helpful, it was also truly transformative. It allowed me to grow as a leader and better support my colleagues, to contribute to the kind of learning environment our youngest students in Batavia need. I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity and... I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity, and it has meant so much for my work and my growth here in Batavia.
And now I'm going to call Sarah McEwen up, she is in Cohort Six, so you got the perspective of a Cohort One student, if you will, and now we have somebody who is in Year Two, and the research stuff, right?
Yeah.
Let's go.
Hi, my name is Sarah McEwen. I'm the adaptive physical education teacher and the leadership program teacher at the high school. Being part of the BPSU has been a special experience for me. I applied for BPSU after hearing others about the great camaraderie it builds among staff from different buildings, and the incredible number of strategies that they took away to use in their own classrooms throughout the year. After being accepted, I read through the description of expectations, and seeing part about the TED Talk made my heart skip a beat. But, while I'm still nervous about presenting my action research, I'm really excited about my topic, and the potential findings that could benefit my students and strengthen my program. BPSU has had a tremendous impact on both my work and home life. The topics that we explore in BPSU go far beyond the classroom, they're true life skills that I now share with my students and my own children at home. The most meaningful part for me has been creating my leadership manifesto. While I've always viewed myself as a leader, I had recently felt a bit disconnected from my purpose as an educator. Developing my manifesto helped me reconnect with my core values, reignite my creativity, and restore a balance of fulfillment in my daily routine. So thank you, BPSU, appreciate it.
In a minute, we're going to give time if our board wants to ask any questions, but I would be, I'm making a mistake if I didn't say Jenny Barron, who is a speech pathologist, she started at the early childhood, and I think she's worked in every school in the district except for Rotolo, and now she's at the high school. She was a part of Cohort One, and I would argue or contend she's one of the biggest BPSU champions in our entire district. To this day, she still emails us with ideas and thoughts and leadership things, she's incredible. She was supposed to be here tonight, she was not feeling well. And I just wanted to mention her because she would have, you would have enjoyed her speaking because of her passion for BPSU. So with that, I don't know if the board has any questions, but we are happy to answer them, and we absolutely have two graduates, or one graduate and one mid person who would be happy to answer questions, I'm sure.
I have a few questions. So the research projects, are they graded, like do you have a rubric, or do they just have to present?
It's worth 1,000 points.
We always say that. It's not graded, but we have check-ins along the way to make sure they're on the right path. And I would actually say that the grade, if you will, there's no formal grade, the grade is, they present their findings in front of their colleagues, and I would say that probably that experience is plenty for them. And I will tell you, we have the, we do it every September, so like Sarah's cohort is finishing this year, next September, middle of the month, not on homecoming night. We go to the BFAC and we do it in the black box, and they present their findings, and it's really one of my favorite nights of the year, because you get to see in about two hours, two and a half hours, what all they've been working on, and what they've learned. And it's funny, we've seen people, we had high school English teachers who were in maybe Cohort Four, and she did her research project, and then she had a colleague that she worked closely with, she actually built on her colleague's research and extended it on a very, on the same topic. And so, it's just cool to see, Drew Ray actually is another person who is a graduate. Yeah, if you have questions, Drew, you can ask Drew questions. He did his research project too, and anyway, so it's not graded in a traditional manner, but we definitely spend a lot of time, there's a lot of supports around them to make sure that they are on the right path. And the real grade is, what are they learning, and how is that impacting their students?
Do they get professional development for this?
Yes, they get, yes, they get 80 hours at the end of the two years, so 40 hours each year.
For their, for their teaching license, for their Pell.
And then, what do the teachers get when they graduate BPSU?
They get an increase in their compensation after completing two years, which is bargained out in our contract, and then they get a beautiful, beautiful signed certificate from Tom Kim, Ming Shelby, and myself.
Is this, I apologize if it was said, but does it move them over or up in lanes? Or do they just get this a one-time, I call it a one-time payout or whatever?
What it is, is it's a, it's a base salary increase that stays with them the rest of their career. Because, again, we don't have the traditional salary and lane schedule anymore, so it basically just, it gives them a bigger raise for that year, and then that stays with them for the rest of their career.
And then, so if a teacher gets pulled or laddered, or whatever it is for BPSU, if they already have their masters, or second masters, or PhD, I guess I just want to say, I know we're always continuing our professional development, but do they, I guess I'm trying, like, how effective is BPSU if someone already has two masters, a masters, a PhD? Because you said that you're trying to concentrate on somebody who maybe can't afford that advanced degree. So I guess this is the question, is like, if I already have two masters, or a PhD, or a masters, how will this help?
I have thoughts, but maybe these guys could.
Sarah, Ally, do you guys want to come back up?
Drew, you want to say anything about it?
I'd actually like to speak on that, because I.
Will you come up to the podium, please, Sarah?
Yeah, so people can hear online. No, all good.
My pee voice is not projecting, okay. I received my masters a couple of years ago in special education, after having physical education as my bachelor's. And I can tell you that when BPSU compared to my master's education, like Steve had mentioned, this is more directed to what the growth for Batavia is, where I learned from professors at Aurora University, and they were great, but it was their philosophies and their thoughts and processes. Here, I'm learning like what our community provides for our students, and we're all working together to do that same thing. So, I hope that answered your question.
Is any teacher eligible, or are there qualifications that they have to meet to?
The current, again, this is a part, came out of our bargaining, and so all teachers are available, priority is given to tenured teachers over non-tenured teachers, that's the current language.
I just want to say thank you to Ally and Sarah for sharing your stories and coming up, I know that's not an easy thing to do, it's very exciting. I have a couple of questions. One, I know we're getting that collaboration when the cohorts are together and going through the BPSU together, are we seeing, once they move through the program, is that continuing on a building-to-building level, or have we tracked kind of, I'm just curious, maybe you even can speak to it, after building those relationships for two years, if that transfers them once you're through it?
Outside of baby playdates?
Well, yes. More on a professional standpoint, I guess.
I think one of the, I think one of the things that really helped do was that I felt more comfortable reaching out to peers. So, in early childhood, some people still don't even know we exist, kind of, like, it's like, what, you have an early childhood program? It's not like the Husky properance, it's very different. And so, sometimes there would be activities going on, and I'd reach out, I reached out to Rotolo, actually, and their, I forget what class it was, but my son was in the class, and they made adaptive tools for the preschoolers that I taught. So they did a whole lesson, they transformed it into toys that preschoolers could play with that have adaptive needs. So, it just gives you that confidence, like, oh, I know somebody, that somebody's going to know me. I've actually reached out to Jenny to ask for help at the high school, because now she has a whole nother slew of people there. It just, it helps, because there's so many people with so many different resources. Yeah, and I mean, we had a cohort of 30 people, so there was a lot of different people that I can still talk to today, and when I see them, I can say hi, and not go somewhere and not really know anybody, so it's nice.
Sarah has something to add to that, too.
It also helps in our PLCs, because we're talking the same language, so we are more efficient, more effective. Those crucial conversations, I just started that book, and that has already come to play in our PLCs, not just for me who's been in BPSU, but other people who have been, or new people that are entering into the cohort now. So, it helps with our PLCs, too.
And I just love the fact that, you know, Ally shared her, or, I think, yeah, Ally, you went first, so your story about how our teachers have access to this now, or is before, depending on your circumstances, your opportunity for professional development by limited or unavailable, right? So, I think that's outstanding. And then I would just be interested, now that we've been doing this for a while, are we like kind of tracking data like on the outcomes in the classroom as far as impacting students? As opposed to if they're going to Aurora, or, you know, it's a hodgepodge of all different experiences? Are we starting to look at gathering data on that, just to see how it's trickling down to the students? I'm not sure if that's for the teachers, or for me.
I can speak to a little bit of it. So my project was PLC, and if you really Google it, there's not a lot of early childhood centers that do the true PLC framework. And through that two years, I was doing it in large time, and we've had three different student goals, and our students, special ed included, have met 98% of their goals we've written. And that's through that process of creating a PLC, which was directly from the BPSU cohort. So that kind of is your grade, is that the students are showing great outcomes from it, and it gives you that chance to kind of work with your team and practice what you've been doing. So I feel like that is a huge piece, because that wouldn't have happened had we not had that opportunity.
So with the action research, right, they start with a question, a goal, and then our teachers are taking our data throughout, like, how much are our students growing? How much are they learning? Is it working, is it not? And Drew, I hope you don't mind me sharing about your project, but Drew thought, was, he went in with one way of how to teach, and he's like, oh, it's going to be awesome, they're getting more experiences, they're going to do awesome on this final exam, and then they totally flopped, it was like the opposite of what he thought. And so he's like, all right, no problem, like, what do I do from here? How can I take this information and continue to adapt and adjust? And the reason why that, his presentation stands out in my mind so clearly is because it's okay to fail and make mistakes, and learn from them, and get better, and we're modeling and showing our students that failure is information for us to continue to grow, that we're not stuck in that failure, that we're resilient, we can get back up and continue to improve.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I would contend, you know, research is pretty clear, job embedded learning in a collaborative setting is about the best thing we have in education, you can Google that, and you will find it. Work, if you Google, hey, is it better to work in isolation or be collaborative in education, what is going to have the most impacts on student learning? There is no research that's going to tell you that it's great to work in isolation, right? And then the job embedded learning, we really feel like with our action research, teachers are actually doing the right work of that job embedded learning, where they're trying to answer a question, or solve a problem, or try something new, see how the students perform, and then make adjustments, right? That's just good, sound instruction. And so, what they're getting out of this experience, besides all that background knowledge and learning that they're going back to their schools and their teams, and their colleagues and sharing with, is they're actually having it play out in real time. And it's been said many times, in a school system where the teachers are learning than the students are learning, I'd like to say in BPSU, that's what we're, that's what we're after. We're after our teachers learning and learning together, and then that's going to impact the learning of our students. It's pretty incredible stuff when you really think about it.
I just have a comment, and it has more to do with what I believe is the significant aspect of this program, which is on recruiting and retention of the teachers. So, I think having this program, and, you know, we're in need of great teachers, and there's a shortage, so having this program as part of our district, I think helps, can help in the recruiting of teachers, so. And then also from a retention standpoint, you know, going through this program, I would guess the numbers are pretty strong in that, that area.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, I didn't want to get into all of the strategies of the program, but certainly, having teachers earn something that they, for a pay raise that they can't take elsewhere, does incentivize them to stay here. And it's funny that you say that, Rob, because we've had the opportunity to present on this, both nationally and statewide on BPSU, and I can't tell you how many people then reach out to us, because they see the benefits that this could have for their system. So, I don't know that we necessarily, that was all part of the master intent, but it certainly has ended up playing out that way from, from that standpoint, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
And I get to do some of the screening interviews of potential candidates, and they're brand new to our district, and I'll say, okay, do you have any questions? And they're like, can you tell me about BPSU? And so that's already drawing some people, I'm like, wait, how do you know about BPSU? So, it is, like you said, Rob, an interesting, something special that we have, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, well, the only thing I'm going to, the one thing I'm curious to see playing out, no research, no request or anything, is as people kind of get in the latter half of their career, right, and if they were going to go get a masters, or go get a PhD, or whatever else, their opportunity to kind of pay that dwindles, so therefore they don't tend to be incentivized to go be able to do those things. And I think this gives a good opportunity for those later in their careers, but still want to learn and still want to progress, given opportunity, if it's a lottery, to do that, that doesn't have a financial hit that they have to pay off over time. So, that's a really, I hear about it from other districts every once in a while, too, so, thank you. And this came, if I recall correctly, about a bit of a discussion over one of our action items before, and asked if they could give us a little bit more information, if I remember correctly, so I appreciate you guys taking the time to do that.
Yeah, and I totally agree with what you just said, Craig, and I would, I would be upset if I didn't share this. As you can imagine, you know, during the school year, February, let's say, it's four o'clock on a Wednesday, and I'm in my office, and I'm like, yeah, I kind of want to go home right now, right? You know, you're like, all right, and I got, now we have BPSU from four to six, right? But I'm telling you, Ming, you know this, we walk out of here at six o'clock, and we are so jacked up, and we're so excited, because we have educators who, again, have taught all day long, they're tired and exhausted, too, and they come in here, and they get into it, they invest in each other, they invest in the content, they have great conversations, they're taking actions and doing things. And I will tell you that being a part of BPSU and getting to build these relationships, they're a little bit different relationships than human resources, right? It's very inspiring to me. And so, I'm very grateful that I've had the opportunity to be a part of this, because it's really inspired me in the latter years of my career, in the same way, where I've gotten to learn and engage with teachers in a totally different relationship, and I'm sure Ming feels exactly the same way, and it's, it's a heck of a lot of fun. And so, I'm very grateful, and I think we have something very, very special here, and that's why we thought it would be important for us to share about this. So, with that, I'm going to shut up, because I could talk on.
Thank you. One other consideration, so you guys said that you had 30 students the first year, realize that was too high, and you settled on 20 to 23 is the sweet spot. I just find it a little ironical, in a sense of, these are adult students, but we have some of our classrooms with middle school or high school kids with 27 or 30 students, and yet they have to manage those.
Well, there's one aspect I didn't really get into here, and Tony's probably thinking this right now, is that we have a fixed budget in our contract, a pile, a pool of money that goes towards compensation for professional learning. And in Year One, we could get away with it with 30 students, but then when you have two cohorts going, that's 40 students, and so, there is a financial aspect to this as well, that was a decision maker behind that. So, with that.
Now he's really done. Unless there's.
Really done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. All right. Tony, you going to stun us with a, your stunning rendition of Caffer?
Actually, no, I'm not. No, we're going to leave that to the professionals.
Tony's taking a break. He's got to talk about the future. I'm going to talk about closing the books on the past. So, the act for here is basically the financial audit, and it is 147 pages. So I'm hoping you did your pre-reading, and read through that, and I'm not even going to give the rendition of it. We've got a special guest here tonight, Don Shaw, he's a principal auditor at Lauderbach and Ammon, and he's going to talk about the audit. So, take it away.
Thank you. As a proud resident and taxpayer, it's exciting to see so many people passionate about the audit results, so. Had standing room only before, so thank you. In all seriousness, I first want to thank Tony, Josh, and the entire team for all their help in making this a successful first audit year. Without their help, this would not be possible, so thank you. Next, we can go through the annual financial report with you, which is a thinker of the packets you received. If you're following along electronically, it's going to be the actual page number at the bottom of the page, if I say a specific page numbers.
He's going to go through all 147?
Yes, buckle up.
One?
No, I'll try and keep it brief, don't worry. So page eight is the, is our Lauderbach and Ammon letterhead, this is our independent -- This is our independent audit report, in which we provide a clean, unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion you can receive. Basically states that we found no issues with internal controls or the numbers as they were presented. If you scroll about three or four more pages, you'll run into the management discussion and analysis. This section really provides a summary of how the year performed in narrative form. So if you have questions on fluctuations from year to year, or what the numbers truly mean, this is where you wanna go to see those answers. I always say, you don't have to read a hundred and forty-seven pages, but this section will give you the high level. The individual fund financial statements and income statement will begin on page twenty-eight. At about three quarters of the way down the page, you'll notice that the general fund, which is your main operating fund, it's made up of your education, operations, and maintenance, and working cash funds, had a operating increase of nine point one million dollars. This is primarily due to your property taxes collections being a little higher than anticipated, while your expenditures were below budget in the current year. This was offset by a transfer out to your capital projects fund, so your general fund was left with a five point six million dollar net increase. The next section is the notes of the financial statement. And this really provides further detail into how we came up with the figures that we did with supporting schedules. Within there, you're gonna find your long-term debt and your capital asset schedules. I'm not gonna go through all the notes with you tonight, so I'll have you skip ahead all the way to page eighty-five. Page eighty-five is the start of your budgetary information. So if you wanna see how a specific fund performed based on what was budgeted, this is where you wanna see those comparisons. Does anyone have any questions on the financial statements before moving on? Okay, we also provide a second document called the major letter. We had, it was a really good year, we only had two current year recommendations. The first of them is related to your capital projects fund being over budget. This is primarily due to the timing of when construction payments happened. There were some payments that happened in July and August, but the work was performed in June, so we had to bring that back to fiscal year twenty-five. So it's, that's really just more of a timing difference. The second comment is in regards to IT controls. We found no issues with Batavia School District specifically, but our industry, we're seeing more and more cyber attacks. So we wanna make sure that we're bringing that awareness to all of our clients. So again, we don't have any concerns for here specifically, but we wanna raise that awareness. Anyone have any questions? Alright.
Printed copies, Tom?
What's that?
Printed copies?
Yeah, we can, we'll mail those to you. Yep, yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright.
I have, I guess, a comment. I pulled out two things from this report, some text. One, I'll just read a verbatim. A summary was, the district finished the year in a strong position. Operations were balanced, reserves increased modestly, and debt continued to decline. So I thought that was a good summation of the, of the year. And then the other thing I noticed was our long-term debt, down to four point oh-nine million, down sixty-eight percent from last year, so our long-term debt is decreasing dramatically.
Yeah, to go along with that, the ISB AFR, that's another form that we have to submit. It ranks, it's a financial profile score, so it's out of four, so you guys got a four point oh, so A-plus in that aspect. So again, that's another great year.
Yeah, so I just wanna say, this is, I mean, if this is open to the public, it's on our website now, there is a lot of information in here, it's very detailed. And I know that's a lot of work to get us in the financial position we are, and then to document it in this sort of fashion. So I wanna say thank you to Tony and your team for your stewardship. And I appreciate, you know, the verification on the audit, that we're doing the right things.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Alright, thanks for your time, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, you too.
Take care.
Alright. Item six point five, committee updates, Tom?
Yep, so, board, you see the committee updates as posted. This is typically where we have board members as representatives to the committees go ahead and share out. But as all, you know, what we've been doing is sharing the committee reports as well, for the public and for each other. So I don't know if there's a particular order the board would like to go in for people?
If anybody'd like to start, go ahead.
CAC hasn't officially met, but they just had a fifteen-minute, like, Google meets or something. I couldn't attend to it. I think it was just to go over the field test of the ELA, like the elementary school. And that's all it really was. Our official meeting isn't until this Thursday.
Beefy did meet, and I wanna alert everyone that it's no longer rebranding from Beefy to the Batavia Foundation, because we determined nobody knows what Beefy means. So Batavia Foundation might have a little more understanding to what that is. The foundation did make forty-four hundred dollars with the donations to AC Storm and AGS the last month. And we did have a meeting, because there is an application process to receive these funds, to how we can streamline it or make it more accessible for teachers, because if we have money to donate to the district, they wanna give every penny away. So we're gonna try to collaborate more with the teachers in the building, so that it's an easier process, easier to understand, and you get some more engagement in that realm. And then also, Hall of Honor, I mean, you walked in this evening, you might have seen the sign for that with the QR code, but we are accepting nominations for the Hall of Honor as well. And we'll be doing that through the end of January.
Great. Any others I'll add about stipend, but go first?
RAC was an open meeting, which most of you are at, so I don't need to update you on that. Insurance went well, ninety-eight percent, I believe, of the, they had open enrollment, and ninety-eight percent of people took care of it during enrollment. And then I attended the BIC meeting, which was the first BIC meeting I attended. It was a great meeting. They were presented with the student handbook feedback survey to, you know, get that out to their schools, to have parents look over the updated handbook and fill out that survey. And then the main thing that I wanted to discuss was that there was someone there who said, hey, what happened to board reps at the schools? And they actually mentioned Aaron Kilburg, she's like, we used to see Aaron Kilburg all the time. So I explained to them that we had kind of changed things so that we could all have an opportunity to go to different schools. But I'm kind of wondering if that's not working, because it seems like maybe the schools are feeling like we're not there, supporting. So I don't know, I think we have to have a conversation about if there's a different way we could do the invitations, or... I went through the invite emails that we've gotten, and I made note of some things that are coming up that no one's RSVP'd to. Like, there's a JBN family reading night on November twentieth. Ginberet, gingerbread, jamboree at the EC on December eighteenth. We got an email recently about Grace McQueen Winter Wonderland Kids Holiday Shop gift wrapping, which I signed up for, if anyone would like to join me. I got a signup link to do that. So I don't know, does anyone have ideas about how to better sign up for things?
Since my name was brought up, I mean, I did like the old system better, because I felt like there was a little bit more of a personal connection to that building. You got to know the PTOs better, and this is compared to this year. Like, I felt like a connection to that, and the principals as well. And it felt a little more personal, and they felt a little more comfortable, like if you're there, like, oh, this is Aaron, because we've already kind of met. And so I felt more connected to that school. Or now I feel like I'm just kinda getting invitations, and it's a lot of them, and it kinda feels a little overwhelming sometimes. So I think I would be open to a process where it's a little more... You know, I get why we changed it, but I'm feeling a little more disconnected from the process than I did before.
Yeah, to answer your immediate question about, I think we probably need to do a little better job of some of the events that you highlighted, and taking a look at that, and trying to get to those for the remainder of this school year. But I agree with Aaron's comments. I speak for myself, I was more engaged when I had a school specifically assigned. I kinda went through a process where I would go and visit the school, meet with the principal before the school year started, attend a teacher-staff meeting, attend a PTO meeting. And then from there, that would snowball into a number of other activities at the, at that particular school throughout the year. So I guess I'm in favor when we reevaluate this for the next school year, looking at maybe potentially going back to our previous methods.
So does, do we want to, what I'm kind of hearing is, okay, we'll be more diligent about responding to whatever we can attend to now, get through this school year, and then investigate and discuss what we wanna do next year for it? Is that what I'm hearing? I'm all for it, I mean, and pick up the BPSU, sometimes you learn by things not working quite the way you expected it to. So it's fine with me.
So for the remainder of the school year, could we have somebody, you know, once a month, review upcoming invites that we've gotten, and just send out an email? Hey, these are the things coming up in December.
I can do that, because I think that was supposed to be my job. I think I was supposed to be doing that, so I should, I need to do that. I'll own that. Yeah, you're my part.
Okay. Anything else?
So once a month, like December first, here you go, here's everything that we've gotten an invite for?
Yeah, or even, even the previous month, like, you know, around mid-month, November, mid-November. Hey, these are the events coming up in December. Check your emails.
That we've got invites for, alright, I'll make a note of that.
Now, I also think that there's some schools that we haven't really received invites from, which, and maybe that's just because it's a new process, and they don't, they don't know how to... It was maybe easier for them when they could just reach out to one person, instead of invite all of us.
I think people sometimes get nervous using the board email.
That might be true. They're like, am I supposed to use this email? Which is a discussion point for individual people, being assigned, so it's a little more personal. Okay. Thank you, bringing that up. Stipend committee met, it's the first time I've ever been on that group. I was kinda covering the meeting, but it was a good meeting. A lot of things I did not know. It's a very collaborative process, if you guys haven't been a part of it or know about it, but it's effectively how we take this pot of money and be able to disperse it for all the extra work that a lot of our teachers do beyond their kind of day-to-days, so, and staff. So it just continues to move forward. They don't meet fairly regularly, right? It's kind of quarterly of sorts, kind of hits and then goes.
We meet at the beginning to kind of wrap up the last year, look forward a little bit, and then we'll meet more regularly come springtime, because we have a timeline, and when applications are submitted.
Very organized process there, so.
We have a process.
It was fun to witness, so. Okay. Any other committees? Nope? Okay. Thank you. Alright, item six point six, financial forecast, Tony?
Yes. Thank you. So this year, the financial fore, this, what's unusual about this year is that we built three years of the financial forecast into our 2026 budget. So in many ways, you've seen a preview of the financial forecast that we do each year, where we're looking forward five years. It's an important practice to try to envision what the future looks like from a financial standpoint, based on a whole host of assumptions, so that we can adequately plan and see things coming and plan around them to the extent that we can.
I'm not reading into, you started this and Tom ran out of the room.
That is, that is a little strange. But no, I'm sure he's taking care of some of us. So the purpose, like, one of the requirements for our credit ratings is that we're looking, we're showing evidence that we're looking forward and being able to plan and predict some of these things. While we don't, we're paying off our bonds this year, and we'll talk more about that later, we don't necessarily, we're not required to do this, it's good practice. And this is how we can, especially when it comes to the capital projects that we have underway, figure out how they fit together and where money is available. And keep a real close eye on our fund balance, because I say every year, it wasn't that long ago, when I first became the CSBO and business manager of Batavia Schools, we had to borrow money every year to get through the school year, because we ran out of cash to pay for our payrolls and our bills. And if we don't maintain that minimum fund balance policy, we're gonna be back into that rut again. And of course, these are assumptions about what the future is in terms of economic activity, developments in town, you know, what the CPI, the Consumer Price Index is, all those sorts of things, what revenue the state's gonna be able to provide to us. So there's a whole host of assumptions in here, they may or may not come to pass, but the exercise itself is important, so that we understand how the pieces fit together, and we can manage them through time. And of course, we have a reasonable understanding of what might happen in a year from now, but as you get further on, once you get past three years and you get closer to four or five years, those, that, you know, the future becomes pretty murky. We don't have a crystal ball here. But we do make some assumptions, and one is that the Consumer Price Index, which determines a very large portion of our incoming revenues, because we're so reliant on property taxes, determines that revenue. And that CPI is key statistic, is relatively high compared to what we're used to in the last fifteen, twenty years. We do see it stabilizing, edging more toward two and a half percent in these scenarios, although the Fed's target, the Federal Reserve's target, is really closer to two. But so we're assuming that it's gonna be a little higher than what if it anticipates. That our enrollment by and large stays level. We're gonna talk more about enrollment capacity a little bit later tonight, and actually in the next report. But we're assuming that not much is going to change in terms of enrollment. You'll see the reasons why. That we'll be moving to full-day kindergarten. State mandate requires that we move to full-day kindergarten in 2028. We're gonna do that a year early. That's gonna require some changes in staffing. We're gonna have to have full-time kindergarten teachers for those sections, that our local revenue grows within what they call PTAL limits. We'll talk about that in a moment, but that's essentially the tax cap. And that, you know, we're not gonna probably get a whole lot of help from the state or the federal government, as they're facing their own issues. So we're really on our own here in Batavia when it comes to funding. And that, you know, probably much of the same experience we've had in the last few years post-pandemic is we'll be fighting with inflation, especially contracts, because we're so heavily reliant upon purchase service contracts to do, to provide a lot of services. We're atypical compared to most school districts in that we have contractors to take care of our food service, our transportation, and our custodial services. And usually, school districts were outsourced, one, maybe two of those, but not generally all three. So when you compare our finances to another school district down the street, for example, they're gonna have even higher reliance on salaries and benefits, because those individuals work for them directly, whereas we're outsourcing it. One of the things I always like to say is, we have the smallest HR department in the world, and that's not really true, but Steve's team is really lean. And one of the reasons we can have a leaner team in human resources, because those contracts are outsourced. So what does our revenue look like? By the way, all this is detailed in the report that's attached to the board packet. I'm just gonna hit upon the highlights. Here's our overall revenue outlook. This current year, 2026, that's the fiscal year we're operating in right now, and then out the next five years. And those blue stacked bars, the blue portion of the stack... And then out the next five years. And those blue stacked bars, the blue portion of the stacked bars is our local revenue. You can see that's the vast majority of our revenue. The federal government varies, it's a sliver and that leaves the red parts of the stack, the state. Now that's inflated because that number there includes what we call our on behalf payments. It's about thirty million dollars of those red bars are, is money that we don't actually see. Doesn't come into our coffers, but we have to report it on all of our reports because that's what the state of Illinois is contributing to our teachers' pensions in the current fiscal year. So it looks in this particular graph that the state is contributing more than it is. And that's real money, to be clear, but it doesn't necessarily hit our coffers. When you take that money out, ninety percent of all of our money comes from people who live in the school district. That's how we fund our operations. And, um, I would say, you know, we're looking at relatively, uh, modest increases in that revenue. Essentially inflationary increases for the foreseeable future, coming from a hundred thirty-two million in this fiscal year to almost a hundred fifty in twenty thirty-one. And similarly, our expenditures. Um, I mentioned earlier, the salaries and benefits, those are blue and red at the bottom. That's the vast majority of our expenditures, followed by purchase services. And you can see the purchase services increase as time goes on, driven in large part by inflation. You also see some fluctuation in capital outlay. We'll talk more about that this evening. Essentially, I would venture to say inflationary and modest inflationary increases in our expenditures over this forecast period. You'll notice though, that the revenues being a hundred forty-three million in twenty thirty-one are less than the hundred and forty-eight million in revenues. And you'll ask, well, why is that? You should have plenty of money. You got far more revenue than you have expenditures. Except our capital transfers. This year, twenty twenty-six, we're transferring fourteen million dollars out of fund balance, essentially our savings account, into our capital projects fund to pay for what we call the warm, safe, dry capital projects plan. Now that fourteen million dollars isn't sustainable. It's kind of like a one-time increase. But we've got some other increase, uh, some transfers that we need to make over this forecast period so that we can fully fund the over fifty million dollars worth of those projects. When we first started talking about warm, safe, dry, we estimated it would cost something like forty-eight million dollars. And that was maybe two and a half, three years ago. Well, construction inflation is especially pernicious in school construction. Those escalation factors, that things are costing more very rapidly. And so we've had to extend that period. Well, we initially thought it was going to take us five years to spend that forty-eight million dollars. Now it's forty, fifty-two million dollars over seven years. And while we'll have some latitude in terms of how much we contribute in a given year to this work, the longer we drag this out, the more expensive it's going to get. And the longer it's going to take us to keep our classrooms warm, safe and dry for our students. So we have some flexibility, but there is a certain degree of urgency. This looks at the fund balance. It's going to net those revenues, those expenditures and those transfers over time. And it looks at them in terms of realistic best case and worst case scenarios. They're not too dissimilar from each other. So the best case scenario being the green bars, the worst case scenario is being the red bars. And somewhere in the middle, what we think is real probable is blue. And that hangs over this dotted black line. It's essentially the minimum, that fund balance minimum that we need to have for cash on hand. And if we venture too far below that black dotted line, we're going to be in the position where we're going to have to borrow money again to make it through the school year. And that starts to say we're going to have deficits, but we're not going to have enough cash in the bank to pay all our bills until the next, essentially paycheck comes in for the school, the school district. And it comes from our local property taxpayers again. They're funding ninety percent of our operations. And those payments only come in twenty, come in September and they come in, uh, June, July.
Okay, pause you for a second here. Dr. Iglesias, I actually had a note here about this specific point. So I'll share with the board, board policy two point two four five. Uh, consistent with ISB financial profile criteria, requires a minimum fund balance of twenty-five percent of annual revenues. And going through this, that was something I was concerned about with warm, safe, dry going on. Uh, could you walk us through if, I guess you did just now, but some of the other cascading effects if we fall below the twenty-five percent?
Yeah, it counts in multiple metrics. And so as you spend more of that money, we're spending more of our fund balance, our savings account on warm, safe, dry. And as you do that, the metrics that the state is monitoring for your finances go down a little bit. We've enjoyed four point O scores, as Don mentioned just a few minutes ago, for the last few years. That number isn't going to be a perfect four point O looking forward. It's still going to be within the goal boards range, the power metrics that we set, the board set earlier this year. I expect them, I expect those goals to be met, but as we get to twenty twenty-nine, once we get to that point where we're below that bar, we probably won't meet our fiscal goals if we continue on this path. It's, that's more likely than not. So it's not to say that this is going to come to pass, but on the current path that we're on, things that we can predict reasonably at this particular moment, this is where we're headed. And they might, again, I just want to emphasize, it might not come to pass, but if we intervene and manage things appropriately, we want to, we have to be sure of all the variables at play so that we can manage it adequately. Does that make sense?
When you say management, management, manage it adequately, like what is that? Describe what that means to me exactly.
Well, um, it depends on what we spend money on fundamentally. We've got some levers that we can pull in terms of whether it's staffing or it's department budgets, um, or it's capital projects. There are all these competing needs and priorities for the things that we do to fulfill our mission. We have to adjust some of those levers so that we can meet some of our financial obligations and our financial goals. And we can maintain the stability that we need so that we can be sure that we can properly fund all of our programs.
Cause from my chair, like the two levers you can pull that really impact expenditures, our salaries and what we're spending on capital projects. Is that right?
Those are the two largest drivers.
Change the curve, so to speak.
Yes, right now.
Okay. And those are pretty tough decisions to have to make. Very tough.
Yeah. Which is why we do this exercise. So we know what all the variables are. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry.
No, please. That's excellent questions. Thank you. So this is another look at what we call the projection zone. Of that best and worst case scenarios relative to our net surplus or deficit. And since we're making those transfers out to pay for warm, safe, dry, we're seeing significant deficits or until twenty thirty and thirty-one. So this year, we're transferring out that fourteen million dollars that I mentioned earlier. And our net deficit is, I think, eleven million dollars. That lessens as we're transferring out less in twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, but still deficits. And gets closer to zero in the out years of the projection. But going back to this particular graph, we're getting close to that twenty-five percent minimum fund balance, which will present challenges to us. So this is signaling that in twenty-nine, we're going to have to, unless assumptions change, we're going to have to be very careful. Now, what's happened in this year in twenty-six, you recall, is that we're expecting to lose one point two million dollars in state funding. And that's because of what we call the mandated categoricals. These are things that we have to spend money on. And in theory, the state of Illinois, the way that the bu- education budget is set up, that we get reimbursed for in the following year. Because the state has decided to prioritize the evidence-based funding formula, all their new money for education is going into that formula. And unfortunately, we don't receive any of it here in Batavia because we're considered what's called a tier four district and we have adequate funding here locally to address our needs. So the state of Illinois isn't giving us any new money through EBF, although a number of neighboring districts are getting, you know, millions of dollars in new funding. And meanwhile, everybody's getting less money in their mandated categoricals. So for most districts, the net difference is positive. Unfortunately for us, where we're positioned, the net difference is negative. And we expect that trend to continue for the foreseeable future because the state of Illinois finances are not, are not good. And the state of Illinois economics are not that rosy either. So it doesn't appear as though things are going to change for the state. And the federal government is changing some of its approaches to funding education. And that's going to affect us. Not as much, it's a very sliver of our budget, but that all comes to bear on the new revenue that we can expect to spend. So more, basically the verdict is, we're going to probably get less money from the state and the feds. We're going to certainly get more money from local taxpayers and costs, our expenditures are likely to outpace those increases in revenue. So we've got funding volatility from the state. We have what's likely to be more categorical reimbursement proration, as we call it. So less money reimbursed for bringing kids to school with transportation or special education. It's really challenging as construction inflation. We'll talk more about that in the coming months, about the work that we wanted or about to undertake at Louise White School this summer and how that's going to cost more there than it did at H C Storm this summer, last summer. We're also working very hard, uh, on, in, uh, medical insurance. That is driving costs for everybody nationwide and it certainly is driving costs for us. And we're doing our very best to contain it. And then one thing that we've got that kind of helps us, but also needs to happen urgently is the timing of warm, safe, dry. So we can make some modifications to that, as I mentioned earlier, is what our capital outlay is on warm, safe, dry. We can maybe slow it down a little bit, extend it another year, but that'll come with increased costs because of inflation. And it comes at a cost to our educational environment. So, um, things that are variables here that we're making assumptions on again, are is that cap, the consumer price index and how much our equalized assessed value or that taxable value of properties in Batavia grows. Now, there's been a lot of developments of late in town, which is, has not been the case for the last decade post Great Recession. So that's good news. There could be things that we can anticipate that will help us. Um, or, or maybe not. It depends on how the market fares. But we do need to keep a very close eye on that fund balance because that's an important factor in maintaining fiscal stability moving forward.
If there's a canary in the coal mine, is that it? Of like when things are going to start getting tight and tough? That's, that's might not be the best analogy, but you know what I'm saying? Like.
Yeah. Uh, there are many. I, yes, I think, um, that would be a canary. But it, things affect our budgets, um, that are far broader than that. I think one of the key things is, you know, the state of Illinois's, um, economic growth is going to be, is the canary in the coal mine. And what tells us, you know, how the state goes is how we'll go more or less. And Batavia is not very much like the state of Illinois in terms of its averages, you know? It's a relatively, um, wealthy school district, you know, the EAV has grown significantly in the last ten years, despite the stagnation statewide, but, um, it will be an indicator of how things move, move going forward. Yeah. Any questions I can answer for you? All right. And we can move on to the.
Yep, move on to, uh, enrollment and capacity study.
So this is, um, a summary of the findings that came from the RSP consultant study that we embarked upon last spring. And certainly, um, looking at how things have changed over, especially the last twenty years in the school district, we haven't changed our school elementary boundaries in about twenty years. And that's a, that's a, that's a long time. And so one of the driving factors there is do our, our boundaries in the right spot for our schools, especially as, uh, families age through different developments in town and generate students at different rates. Things are essentially more or less clumpy depending on the age of the housing stock. And so sometimes it takes some rebalancing or refinement from time to time. And one of the key drivers of this study was to take a look at that and understand how things have changed and how they might change for the foreseeable future. We're going to run through a summary of those findings. So it includes a five-year, uh, projection about enrollment, which we do every year anyway. But this has got a little bit more data and expertise behind it than what, than what I do when I do my five-year enrollment projections. And it also looks at the cap capacity implications for each of our schools and making sure that we have space in the right places to meet student needs. And then taking this information, we'll take a closer look at our, our boundaries and our facilities and our programming to make sure that everything is aligned for evolving needs. So again, this summarizes, this is all summaries and key highlights from the RSP and associate study. I think the other thing that's interesting here is that, um, there's some insights into why we're here now. Actually, when we get to the last slide, you'll see a summary that might give you some indications of why we are where we are with our finances and our debt and warm, safe, dry overall. Anyway, I'll let that hang there for a second. Um, anyway, this is a summary of, I'll let, this is a summary of our past enrollment and our projected enrollment from RSP and it's broken out by level. So the elementary schools are in red at the bottom, the middle school in blue, and the high school in green and the total sum at the top. Past enrollment is to the left. There's a black bar in the middle and that's projected enrollment in the future. So at present, we're in that last bar immediately to the left of the black bar. So five thousand one hundred forty-seven students at present are fall housing in port. And projecting in five years, five thousand forty-six students. Now, it's a difference of about a hundred students, a hundred and one. I would consider that to be stable enrollment. It's actually about two percent less in five years that they're projecting. I would consider it to be stable, but, um, you know, it's within the margin of error. I asked Chat GPT what it thought it was. Chat GPT said it was moderately declining. So anyway, just for a perspective. And why is it going down? Well, as I like to say, we're not manufacturing as many as we used to. And I say that every year, as the number goes down every year. And I, sometimes I think, oh, it's, it's going to stabilize and, and it doesn't. And this frankly, is a global phenomenon. And, uh, you know, there's obviously inconsistencies around the country, but especially in Kane County, birth rates have been declining for more than a decade. So the black bar that you see here is the live births in Kane County. It was over eight thousand when you go a little bit further back in the charts. Uh, now is at, um, five thousand five hundred four and where the most recent data is available and keeps going down. And then the kind of lighter greenish or bluish bar that you see there is the population in Kane County that is under five years old. What's interesting though, is that the proportion of kids in Kane County who are less than five years old and live in Batavia or Aurora or within our boundaries is actually increasing. The market share, as they say, is increasing, which is interesting. So more people are coming to Batavia than are elsewhere in the county, uh, than they have historically. And they're generating more kindergarteners than we're accustomed to, according to the live births in Kane County. But overall, that doesn't mean that we're getting more students than we saw the year prior. We're still getting less, but we're getting more of the proportion of the market share, as they say, that are born in Kane County.
So you're saying like the pie is shrinking in Kane County?
Pie is shrinking, but we're getting a bigger piece. That's an excellent way of putting it. And so what we're trying to do is forecast. It's very cha- challenging to figure out, like a child born in Kane County, is that child going to show up in one of our kindergarten classrooms in five years? It's a really challenging question. There's no crystal balls here, but we look at the past to attempt to predict the future. So we're looking at those live births and we're looking at that market share to say, well, how many fifth grader, or excuse me, how many kindergartners are we going to have five years from now? Well, all indications are that we'll have fewer because there's just that many fewer births. So on the low end or on the high end, you can see what we've, in the last few years, what's red is the historical and what we're rejecting in the future, low and high for the green and orange bars. It could be anywhere between there. Could be higher, could even be, could even be lower. We don't, we don't know. Uh, it's very challenging to predict, but we do know that, um, the births are what's driving the decline, even though we have more, a bigger piece of the pie. And we look at the cohorts themselves or the, the year of manufacture, as we say, you know? Uh, so, you know, when they were kindergartners, they become first graders and they move through the system. Those cohorts are smaller than they were. We graduated the largest class a couple of years ago, it was more than five hundred. Those cohorts are smaller than they were. We graduated the largest class a couple of years ago, it was more than five hundred from Batavia High School. But coming behind them are cohorts of less than three hundred fifty. And so that's a big difference. And they per, they percolate through the system into various sizes. They're not always exactly sequentially smaller. There's clumps, as I, and clusters, but they are much smaller than they used to be. But there, uh, people always say, well, there's, you know, people moving into town. And they're building new homes. There's surely, there's gonna be more students. And the reality is, there are more students coming in than are going out. We'll talk about that. But there's not enough to offset those declining birth rates. And people come and they go for various reasons, you know? Mom and dad might find a new job and move out of town. They might move down the road, or they might move out of state. And there's people who move in too, behind them. And maybe they choose private school, you know, that would be considered outmigration. Maybe they go to a, a private Catholic high school, and maybe decide that that's better off for their students. Whatever the case may be, there are more students coming in than going out. That is definitely a clear trend. That says, signals to us that Batavia is a place that people wanna be. There's just not enough coming in to offset those declining birth rates. And there is a lot of development that's happening and probably will happen in relative near future. And here's a summary of that broken out by the affected elementary schools. You can see that there's a lot in the future for J B Nelson and Louise White in particular. But what's also interesting is that because of those declining birth rates, the number of students that are generated by those developments and those houses is lower than it used to be. And so we're looking at yield rate trends here. And so the different types of housing, there's single-family units and multifamily units, the basic categories of, of homes. And you can see that the numbers are going down for both over time. So the number of students they generate per one hundred single-family homes, for example, has gone down from fifty-nine in twenty fifteen, sixteen to fifty this year. And what's also interesting is that multifamily units are declining even faster than single-family units. So when we're building multifamily unit homes, what we're accustomed to seeing historically, in terms of the number of students that it generates, is gonna be even smaller, or on average, likely to be smaller for multifamily homes than they are for single-family homes, which is an, is an interesting trend.
And just, do, do you know if on the multifamily units, are they taken into account? Because we've had a number of senior communities or condo communities with seniors. Are they excluding that because they're presuming they may not be?
This is just, it's my understanding that this is just looking at housing stock.
Okay.
Just looking at straight housing stock.
There you, those would be included into that numbers.
Yes. And we have had a number of retirement communities, senior housing communities built in Batavia in the last few years. We'll take a closer look at the overall numbers in here in a moment. But these are the, these yield rates are what drive new student enrollments from these developments. That's the key takeaway. So what does that look like compared to our functional capacity? So if our enrollment has gone down, our, at our peak, about ten years ago, we enrolled sixty-three hundred students in Batavia. Now we're about fifty-two, you know, fifty-one forty-seven. It was the number that we just showed. So it's about a little bit more than a thousand students fewer. So we should have more space. And, and we do. We have more space relative to what we were accustomed to ten years ago. R S P did a, what's called a functional capacity analysis. And that isn't how many people that you can cram into a classroom per se, but how you use that space, how big it is, and what kind of programs you operate in those spaces. And what they found is that our functional capacity of all of our schools combined is fifty-nine seventy. So at sixty-three hundred, we were well over that functional capacity, and now we have a little bit of room. This room, for example, so the maximum number of occupants in this area is fifty-nine. So we're not looking at fire code occupancy. We're looking at programmatic functional capacity that we can put in a space where we can maintain a cohesive and productive learning environment. And so this is art and a science, of course. And, uh, but what we're showing here is that we've got some room. Ideally, according to R S P, you're between eighty-five and ninety percent capacity overall, so that you've got a little bit of space to work with. And the good news here is that at present, um, we only have one school that's over ninety percent capacity. That happens to be J B Nelson School. All of our other schools are within range. And that, um, in foreseeable, if the enrollment trends continue as we expect them to, we'll be at eighty-five percent capacity in five years. So we have space district-wide to meet student needs. There'll be some clumps and clusters, as there always is. Nothing's ever fully perfectly balanced. That's not how families move into town. That's not how kids come to us. Um, but we'll have space to handle what we need to do. Might need to make some adjustments to our school boundaries, especially in that J B Nelson area. But according to R S P and their projections, even though J B Nelson is exceeding that ninety percent capacity right now, in a couple of years, they'll be within that ideal eighty-five to ninety percent range, even still.
Tony, if I could, just one thing that we should make clear, because of this result, this particular aspect, should squelch any kind of discussions that might be happening in community? If people are saying, well, there are some options the district hasn't explored yet to help mitigate the coming, you know, financial concerns about, especially when it comes to our facilities. And, and that, uh, when I first started here, actually prior to my beginning here, I attended some of the referendum forums and some of the discussion points that were being levied against the district where you guys could close a building. Now, if you look at this capacity study here from a neutral third party that we hired as a district, is very clear at those levels of capacity for programming and, and instruction, the answer is no, we can't. If a building was below fifty percent capacity, maybe we're talking about something like that as a, as a strategy or a tactic to approach. But with the numbers Tony just shared, you know, from the study, we can't close one of our buildings.
Actually, we're, and we're right where we should be in terms of functional capacity. We're in, we're in the sweet spot, which is great. We're not too small and we're not too big.
And we did share this with BIC as well.
So this is the, the slide that I mentioned earlier that I said would let hang. I think this is a really interesting slide. And it's development activity over time. So it looks at our housing stock and the year that it was built. And, um, this is a, it looks at total housing stock in Batavia for that particular decade. Black is existing and red is new, what was added in that timeframe. And if you look back into the sixties, the housing stock doubled in Batavia then. That was a period of very rapid growth. Then you look at the eighties and especially the nineties and a little bit of the aughts, there was some pretty massive developments in town. And that too really drove a change in the number of people who lived in Batavia and also came to Batavia schools. That was a profound period of growth. And then the Great Recession happened and new developments effectively stopped. There was very little housing stock added in that decade. But it's starting again, and you can see this in the last five years, you still see, you see a significant sliver on top, and then there's potential for more in the future that we saw on those other slides. And the mayor talks about the number of homes that are likely to be added to Batavia in the next five or so years. If you think about all the work that the school district did, all the, the buildings that they added, the new schools that they constructed, the additions, the debt that we're about to pay off is from all that work in the nineties and the aughts. Everything that we did back then when it came to capital investment was to address capacity issues, especially functional capacity issues, that our schools had to meet, the number of students who were here. And now, twenty and in some cases thirty, in some cases forty years have passed since that work was done. And very little has been done to upgrade those spaces since. And that's why we have embarked upon warm, safe, dry, cuz there's some essential minimal things that absolutely must be done so that we can keep our schools exactly that, warm, safe and dry. We're extending ourselves, and we're spending our fund balances to make that happen. But this in some ways is a little summary of what our, that spending and that growth and that dynamic over time, and why we're faced with some of the financial challenges that we're faced today and what we're gonna be facing for the next five to ten years. So I think this is a real interesting slide. Any questions? All right.
Thank you for that. All right, next is the Illinois School Report Card. Brad.
All right, Holly, can we start on the, I'm gonna encourage you to get on the internet. So we'll do a little bit more interactive. We're in the nine o'clock hour here. If you have a phone, you can do this in the audience. If you have a laptop in front of you. If we go to the, the board report, Holly, we'll start there, and I'll give them just like a quick summary of this. When you scroll down, there's a little chart here. So we go through a process of looking at the Illinois School Report Card, um, just to glean whatever data we can get for continuous improvement. It's really important data for our students and our community, and we wanna make sure that we're really mining it for what we can do to make our, our students' lives better. So we go through a process within the C N I division of taking a look at this and analyzing it. We ask our colleagues around the county, like, what, what are they seeing in terms of their trends? We, we reach out to resources. We have a great contact at I S B who does data for a living. We ask them what they see in our data. These are really important steps. We take this to our administrative team, and then we encourage schools to do this with their school leadership teams as well, right? We should have many eyes looking at this data, and people in our community or school board, you can do this too, to help us learn from this data. This is just what we've come up with in terms of celebrations and concentrations in some of the Illinois School Report Card data, which is released every year at the end of October. The School Report Card itself is one of, probably the better things that the, the state of Illinois does in terms of reporting back the massive amounts of data that we send them. A highlight is, we have really proficient students, which is great. Our kids come with a lot of assets, whether it's knowing multiple languages, they feel safe in their community. These are really important assets our kids bring to school. They're able to be successful and proficient at their grade level. This year, our E L A growth was really strong, um, which is something to celebrate. We have tons of opportunities. Boards, this board and past boards have made sure that we have opportunities for post-secondary readiness. So whether that's advanced placement classes, dual credit, taking courses, um, out at the Fox Valley Career Center, partnerships with Wobonci, our students have great access to those pieces. Uh, we have seen some, especially in the last two years, some closing the gap, which is always very difficult, especially with our special education population. We're seeing a closing of the gap between the growth of some of our subpopulations. And then we have, um, our students taking dual credit and advanced courses that is, continues to be a strength for us. On the concentration side, right? Not everything's rosy, and sometimes within some of this data, we can see things that we're not happy with. And I'll show you one of those today. Our math growth was not something that we saw as stellar performance on, on this year's, uh, report card. And the funny thing is, within our own internal data with MAP testing, N W A MAP testing, it's actually the reverse. We see higher math growth on MAP and less growth on E L A. But on I A R, which is a more complicated testing mechanism, like math problems more complicated. There's more language within them. There's multiple questions on each passage. Our, we have a swap of data. So that led us to have conversations, all right? How can we give kids more depth? Cuz they're very used to taking our MAP test three times a year. They get very good at calculation and moving through that test. What if, what challenges can we give them that would get them ready for I A R type questions? We actually had a session today on what can we do in reading to do that as well? E L students, our English learner students, their progress to proficiency is not where we want it. I'll show you an example of that, but when a student is identified as E L, we wanna very rapidly get their English to proficiency so they're able to access their education. We wanna really close that timeline. We don't want students to languish within, you know, uh, our E L system. We want them growing towards that proficiency in language. One of the things that we're starting to see is that we're starting to see gaps. And these can be multifaceted of low-income students, right? So students whose background is from low income, um, we wanna make sure that we're paying a special attention to them cuz we're seeing some troubling numbers in the data related to their growth and the growing gap between, um, those students and our overall student population. And then finally, chronic absenteeism is something that we want to make sure, we saw a little chunk out of it this year. We're getting kids back to school, but we can't teach them if we don't see them. So we wanna get them back in school so we can do our job of educating them. So those were our celebrations and concentrations, um, but I think it's better if we just get into the report card. So if you have a phone or anything, we'll go into the report card and we'll do a little clicking around. And I encourage every member of the board, the community, to, to take a look at the School Report Card. There you go. And you, when you get there, if you Google it, type in Batavia, you're gonna look at the district report card. That's what we'll look at today, so D one oh one. And you can see on this slash screen, some very general information about our district. They give this nice district snapshot. We have eight schools. We have a high graduation rate. We have very low student mobility. Some districts are dealing with ten, eleven, twelve percent student mobility. And student mobility is when kids come here, they stay here. So that's a great thing because we get the opportunity, as Ally talked about, from three and four years old through, through their graduation to work with those students. That's a great opportunity for Batavia. That's showing up a little weird, but our schools, we have one exemplary school, that is Grace McWayne this year. And seven of our, the rest of our schools are commendable. The state is actually going through a process of updating this process. Right now, only the top ten percent of scoring schools, and I'll show you how they do those scores, can fall into the exemplary category. That's very regressive assessments where you're basically competing with one another to push people down so that you get that exemplary status. Instead of having a bar where if you get over that, that's a, a much better system. They're moving towards a system like that, which I think is much healthier for our, our state.
Question, is that exemplary, you said ten percent. That's not ten percent of our district. That's ten percent everywhere.
The state, the whole state.
Okay.
So, yeah, here's our E, our cohort growth. Growth is a big factor within the scores that our schools get. They give you some basic information on school finances. Tony was just talking about, our, we're not getting any state money cuz of adequacy, so we're at a hundred and six percent of adequacy. I don't know if that's still current, but we have a, a chronic absenteeism, so that's ten percent or more of school days missed of about fourteen percent of our students, so that's something that we're working on. And staff retention, most of our staff who come, they stay here, so ninety percent. So it gives you some basic information. You can, uh, look at any school in the state of Illinois, any public school in the state of Illinois. You can look at the report cards, or if you're like, I know Aaron asked me a lot of questions, like, how do we compare to St. Charles or Wheaton? District two hundred, it's an easy click and you can see that. We're gonna go to academic progress. Click on that. And we'll go to, we'll start with E L A growth, Holly. This is Holly's nightmare, having to drive all of this stuff. So you can see that, that it gives you a little district summary. So fifty, anything over fifty is really good in the state of Illinois. So fifty point two percent of our students had that E L A growth. But it's really good to drill down on some of this data. So if you click on demographics, and if you're doing this on your phone, I don't know how this exactly works, but let's click black. We're gonna click, um, students with I E Ps and low income. And then you can say add demographics. You could look at anything if you wanna look at Middle East and North Africa, and you can look at that. So now it should, will give us this comparison data, which drills a little bit deeper, which, again, highlights things that are both celebrations and concentration. So overall, we saw that before, that fifty point two. Our black students, their E L A growth is fifty-four point seven. So they are outpacing the overall student demographic in terms of their growth in English Language Arts. Students with I E Ps, forty-nine point one. And that's very, very close to our overall student population. So that's one of those celebration points is like, our students with I E Ps, they may have a reading disability, are growing at the same rate as our overall student population. Low-income students, again, very close to that. That's a, um, a pretty rare celebration. That's a pretty rare celebration for low-income students. When you click into some of the other data, there's some more concerning data points. I'm gonna click into post-secondary remediation on the the bottom of this tab. We'll just do a couple more of these, just so the community and the Board can play around with this and ask any questions that they have. So this data, it's old because it's 2023. They get this in arrears. But this looks at both the state and our district students who are enrolling in community college. Typically, for us, it's Wabanci because we're in their district. But students can go to COD or LGEN. You can see overall, a third, almost a third of students are having to take remedial coursework at the community college level. That's a big problem for a couple of reasons. One is they are non-credit bearing. So a student who's going to a community college, if they have to take a remedial class, like a below 100 level class, they're not making progress towards their associate's degree. And two, if they're relying on loans to do that, loans do not cover remedial coursework. So we want our kids, starting at 100 level classes. So almost a third of students in the state overall have to take remedial coursework. We're much lower than that, at 14.6. Very miniscule in reading, again, lower in math and communications is your entry-level speech course for your associate. So this is something that we're really proud of, is that when our kids leave here, by and large, most of them are prepared for 100-level college classes, which can earn credits. They can be a part of their student loans. And to me, that is long-term success for these kids. Let's look at ninth grade on track. We'll just do one more. So again, this one breaks down. Ninth grade on track, there's a very large data pool that suggests that if a kid starts to fall behind in ninth grade, their expected graduation rate goes way down. So we want to keep kids on track while in ninth grade. It's a really important metric. So you can see both the district and the state. If it says no data, it's because there's too few kids and they will redact that. So we're not getting into any privacy areas as well. So this is our ninth grade on track data. This is something that we actually dig pretty deep into, along with our graduation rates, to see if we're setting up systems that can help students remediate quicker and faster so that we can stop that at ninth grade, them falling behind, so that they have a greater chance of graduating high school within the four years. There's different tabs, so I won't go through them today. But Journey, the Equity Journey Continuum is something that we look at. We get a little bit more data. It's pretty sparse from the public view. Our district environment, who our students are, and accountability. This will be the last one I go to. Actually, Holly, we go to schools and district. This one looks, and we'll go to Batavia High School. We'll go to accountability for that. I think there's the Summit of Designation. All right, it sets up this little schoolhouse thing here. So this is how all the schools in the state of Illinois are ranked and looked at. You know, I have relatives in the state of Florida, they get like an A, B, C, D, F grade. Ours comes in this way with our different designations of exemplary and commendable. So Batavia High School was like a fraction, last year it was exemplary. This year it was like a fraction of a point away from exemplary. They set a benchmark for this every year based on that top 10%. We just fell right below that, which is unfortunate. But these are the component parts that go into that weight. ELA proficiency, you can see we get full marks on that. Graduation rate, we lost a few points on ninth grade on track. Science proficiency, all points, math proficiency. Here's what I was talking about, the EL Progress to Proficiency, that long acronym there. That's something that we want to improve and shore up, along with chronic absenteeism. And then we're required to get a climate survey as well, which we get full marks because our kids survey for us. So this is how a school's accountability is measured. So each of our schools looks at this, they decide like, all right, where should we put our efforts? Do we need to tweak our school improvement plan in order to better some of these metrics? The problem with this data is this is all last year's data, so there's a lag there. But it can still teach us something about where we can put our efforts. The one thing that remains true in my career is that what we focus on gets better. So we have a lot of power to make a big difference in kids' life by choosing what we focus on. So if we decide to focus as an organization on EL Progress to Proficiency, I know in my heart and 100%, and the data will bear that out over time, that we will get better at that. Because what we put our efforts to, we have great staff and great people here, great leaders, we can make a difference for kids. So this is data that teaches us something and helps direct where we put our efforts. Any questions from the Board?
Do we have a game plan for the EL students?
That's something we're in the middle of. We're gonna do some conversations with our EL staff this winter to see where they're at. We need to have some conversations with them first. We have experienced like some ebbs and flows of our English learner population. We are seeing kind of different students show up in Batavia. We were seeing a lot of newcomers come to the area for the past few years and because of various reasons, which you'll talk about in a little bit. We're not seeing a lot of newcomers come to the area. So we were seeing refugees from Ukraine, Venezuela, Colombia. Those were our main population of new English learners. We're not seeing that, and it's a little bit different now in terms of who we're seeing come to our doors. So we gotta assess where we're at and plan for the future.
So for the English learners in here, and if it's fine if you can't answer this now, just whatever. So I see it says entering, beginning, developing, expanding, bridging, and then reaching. So what's the difference between, like what's what's bridging, please? I don't know what that means.
They're bridging to that academic language. Those are based on, WIDA is like the the governing organization of English learners. And they have developed a system of assessment that we use, and it also is targeted skills. So if a student is in that bridging area, it will tell us here's where they need to go next in terms of their skill level. In order to exit EL Services, a student on the WIDA test needs to score a composite 4.8. So that includes speaking, writing, listening, reading, excuse me. I have a cold that's not coming down here. Those pieces, I'm spraying all over tongue. So they have to score a composite 4.8 out of that five-point scale in order to do, to exit EL Services where their academic language is proficient for their own learning. So our goal is to get kids from wherever they're at, they can come knowing no English, to get to that 4.8 as quickly as possible because that gives them the best access to the rest of their education here in Batavia.
One of the big pieces about this is if we are able to have students prior to fifth grade, that's a huge advantage for a unit district because programmatically, we really want to target exiting the students by fifth grade. Data and research shows that within the WIDA exam that we're required to administer every second semester, if we can get kids exited by fifth grade, the trajectory moves much quicker for their growth and their academic prowess and success. Once you pass fifth grade, it is extremely difficult for a student to exit based on the way the testing and the system is designed. And so that's why you do see, we're not the only district, you see a lot of districts with concerted effort really trying to support kids to get up by then, when you can get them while they're still in elementary school. Obviously, it's a little bit different if they transfer in for an older age.
Yeah, academic language takes a little bit longer to develop. You can be very conversational. Conversational language happens pretty quickly. But academic language, knowing like the vocabulary and terminology of science and mathematics and social studies, all those things take quite a long time. So if we can get kids early, we can get them exited. But if you have a newcomer who's coming, their freshman year from Columbia, where they've missed a year of education due to being relocated, they have more significant challenges. One, getting back into school. Two, the language skills that they need at high school are just so high in order to do that. So it's much better if we can get them young and then make sure that they reach that proficiency.
Brad, on, so it it kind of picking up on a plan. Who has accountability for delivering what that plan is to address these issues? And do you guys have, when would you expect like that plan to be communicated and in place?
By the spring, we should have a plan for next school year in terms of what our goals and objectives will be. So I would be the person that would be accountable for that. And I would work with the teams, especially the school teams, to to develop that plan and see what that looks like for next year.
It would, you know, I I would guess it would be sometimes school-specific. So.
It's typically elementary, a more common issue, and then secondary, so six through 12. It's really generally two plans because the students look so different at those.
On the Equity Journey Continuum, it looks like there was maybe some product progress with student learning, but we're still like, we barely moved from large gaps to moderate gaps. You mentioned that the, at the administrative level, you can actually see more details about that. So are you able to see data that maybe gives you an idea of where those gaps need to be worked on?
Yeah. So it's giving our kids access to high academic courses. So like, it's part of counseling advising, setting up our system, some of the things that the Board has authorized us to do at the middle school with a seven, eight math class. Those are key steps that we're taking along the way to give kids access to high rigor classes. That's a key component that we're working on. The one component, I I, it's frustrating to me is we are required by the state to give a kindergarten screening assessment within the first 45 days that we have a kid. We actually, that's a huge component of that. So if our kids are coming into kindergarten not prepared, that drags that score down in that metric quite a lot. But I don't control those pieces. I don't control who we get. I just want to make sure we're doing the best job when I get here.
Under the school model, one of the things that ISB is doing a listening tour on, and at the Joint Annual Conference, I believe there are some sessions Board members can attend if they want to learn a little bit more about what the state's looking to do for their approval in January. They're going to be, part of that redesign Brad's alluding to is going to be to focus on building the school's scoring accountability formula on some core principles of growth. And then what they're gonna do to change is not usually, not use other factors. There's a lot of factors that go into that score. What they're gonna do is make it a model where it's an add-on-to versus a add-or-detract, which is what they currently do now. So it kind of focuses on like a strengths and assets model for all schools then in terms of trying to achieve the exemplary status, which I think is a really, I think, healthy change to the way the reporting system will look in the future.
Could I ask a question about the chronic absenteeism? And what strategies we're currently implementing? I mean, I heard our student ambassadors talk about a challenge at the high school. So that's obviously been discussed at that level. But, because I'm just a big proponent of like, a huge percentage of success is just showing up every day, right? So I'd just be interested in what our strategies are to promote attendance.
We started with like awareness, right? So awareness is a huge piece. I I remember when my kids were in school and my daughter would be like, ah, I have a headache today. And I'd be like, all right, you can stay home. Well, I didn't realize that I said that four other times, and that that was her fifth absence for a headache. So awareness is a big piece. So we have a system of letters that we send home to make parents aware of how many days their student has missed. And this is missing for a variety of reasons, right? It can be they're sick, on vacation, funeral, whatever it is. But it's the total number of days that we get concerned about. There's another number of chronic truancy, which is unexcused absences. We don't have very many students that fall into chronic truancy. But we have a lot of students who will miss a lot of days, so over that 10% threshold. So it starts with awareness. Holly and her team, oh, that's just Holly. Holly and her team have done a huge amount of district communication, which is then repeated in building communication around the importance of attendance. If we don't give people a reason to do that, we need to, right? We need kids in school, people need to know that. The other part ties into all of the work that our buildings are doing around belongingness, right? You don't want to come to school if you don't feel like you belong there. So all of that work feeds into that system of getting kids there. The high school talked about last year with you with their data, giving kids another reason, extracurriculars, to come to school. That is also a part of this. So like, each school is doing something to to work on belongingness. We're working on communication around the importance of attendance and really looking at what interventions we can have. So we have teams this year going to a three-part series at the Regional Office of Education with like an attendance national guru about digging deeper into some of the strategies that they can use to get kids to school.
Do you know how we're doing so far this year as far as the chronic absenteeism? I mean, I know we're only, what, four months in?
Yeah, I monitor, I monitor attendance pretty regularly. We've seen some bouts of like sickness and stuff like that. Hopefully, I'm not spreading that around, but.
You are.
The, I want kids to come to school, so. We've seen some bouts where you could see like attendance dip a little bit. Half-days are really bad for attendance. So we, we only have one of those in our calendar, but it's for parent-teacher conferences, half-days. A high school, that was a kind of a problem area. So I'm glad they're doing these attendance incentives in order to kind of get kids to rally around one another and have that. We still want kids to stay home if they're sick or they're ill. Our nurses do a good job of communicating under what conditions should they stay home. I can't remember the acronym that they use. It's like a lot of Bs in it, right? Arfing. So those types of things. So I think it's kind of a whole school, from the nurses to Holly's department, to the the buildings, all doing stuff to get our kids here, and we're doing pretty good this year.
Do you have a system in place where you check in with the students that are having issues and their families? And what do you do with that information?
Yeah, our counseling and advising team does a really good job of that. At both the middle school and high school. So at the high school, we have houses, so like the freshman house. They, as a house, which involves their social worker, the school counselor, the administrator that oversees that, they will go over attendance data and look for what are the trends and patterns that we're seeing. And if we need to check in with kids, that's where they would make those decisions about which kids and who needs to check in on them. One of the best things that we can do as an organization, and sometimes we're reticent to do this, is to just let kids know when they come back from an absence that we missed them and that we want them there, and we're encouraging them there to be there, right? When you have little ones in elementary school, it's not really their choice. But we want to encourage them and say that we missed them because that brings that sense of belonging, and then kids will want to come to school more often.
All right, that's it. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, I am on to action items. Item 7.1, update Board Protocol.
Yes, so there was discussions about, if you take a look at the draft of the Board Member Update, the Board had talked about this in terms of discussion items and. Laura Martinez, sorry, I think I am getting sick right now. I'm not kidding. But Laura Martinez had documented some of the changes that were discussed by the Board. And Katie, I think you had raised, you know, you know, do we have that document anywhere? So provided this updated document, one, it's a, it's the Board's own document, right? So it's up to you if this is something you still feel is consistent with what everyone agreed to. You know, if you want to make changes, we're here to help you with that, and we'll make note of it and and bring whatever it is you all want to talk about adding or editing. But here it is.
Any comments or questions? Any revisions, everybody feels comfortable with it? All right, hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the updated Board Protocols as presented.
Moved.
So moved by Rob. Seconded by Raquel. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Spasiki?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Kilberg?
Yes.
Garros?
Yes.
Araladu?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Item seven point two, determine estimate of twenty twenty-five tax levy. Tony?
Thank you. This evening, we are presenting an estimate of the twenty twenty-five tax levy so that we can adopt formally that levy at the next meeting in December. And uh because of how things shake out this year, we have some additional requirements that we're not accustomed to. In particular, we have to comply with the truth in taxation law because we are requesting more money, more than five percent, hundred and five percent more than was extended last year. And yet, at the same time, we're going to collect even less than last year. So how does that work? And it's an interesting conundrum. We have to follow the truths, truth in taxation law because we're requesting a hundred and five percent more than last year. But as a matter of fact, we're going to receive less than what we got last year. So it's an interesting question and I hope by the time I get to this presentation, you'll actually understand what's going on. And if you, I, and if you don't, I'll have failed miserably and we can, we can keep talking about it until we figure it out. So alright, here we go. Each year, uh one of the key duties of the Board of Education is to adopt the annual property tax levy. And that is extremely important here in Batavia for all the reasons that we discussed a little earlier that we're so heavily reliant upon tax uh revenues. And if we didn't do that, ninety percent of our revenue would disappear like that. We would not have the legal authority to extend those taxes. So this is really important. Uh, and we have to share this estimate, we have to post notice in the paper and it has to be, uh, what, how does it work, Josh? I don't remember.
Between like seven and fourteen days.
Seven and fourteen days. It's very particular, it has to be in a certain format and worded in a certain way and it has to have a quarter-inch black bar around the, it's very, very specific requirements that we have to follow. So this is, this is one of them tonight. The tax cap determines how much we can collect over the prior year. It's called the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, or PTO. We all, we just call it the tax cap. And that limits the operating tax increase to CPI or five percent, whichever is less, plus new construction. So whatever the CPI is generally, unless the CPI is more than five percent. We had one year where the CPI was more than five percent a few years ago, so we were capped at five, plus new construction. Now, new construction is a interesting thing because of what's happening here in Batavia with the expiration of TIP one, we'll talk about it in a minute. So this year is very atypical for us that we're going to see new construction of twenty-seven million. For the last ten years, as I've served as uh the chief school business official, usually that number's around five. So a twenty-seven million dollar increase is a lot more than we're accustomed to. And the whole premise behind tax cap laws because these passed in the early, in the early nineties, tax rates increased very rapidly in the eighties and nineties because of all the things that we saw on those prior graphs and taxes were going up so fast that they were trying to curb some of those increases. And so that's what PTO does. It's driven off of our equalized assessed value. And we're, as the, the assessors, all the various assessors in town have shared their estimates with the clerk and their compiled, so for Batavia Oak Schools, our equalized assessed value, which is one-third of the market value, is one point nine billion dollars with a B. That's a heck of a lot of of value. And it's getting close to doubling in ten years. I maybe it's something around eighty percent, I would say. I haven't done the math on it, but that's a lot bigger than it used to be ten years ago. So it's growing rather quickly. And this year alone, it's eleven percent increase. So property values in Batavia of existing construction have increased by eleven percent from the prior year. So Batavia is the place to be. It's market appreciation, it's twelve point two million dollars in new construction, so those are new homes and businesses, commercial facilities, industrial facilities, anything with taxable value that's added to the tax rolls in the last calendar year. Plus fourteen point eight million dollars of taxable value from the expiration of Batavia TIP one. TIP one is essentially downtown Batavia. There's, it's a pretty wonky kind of irregular shape, but sort of more or less downtown Batavia. Why is that expiring? Well, that particular area went on, became a tax increment finance district, which meant that from, I think the year was nineteen eighty-nine forward, any new value, taxable value for those particular properties in that zone went to uh the control of the city of Batavia and they used the increase in those, in in that increment to improve blighted areas in downtown Batavia. They can only do that for twenty-three years or up to thirty years if they receive an extension. And they did receive an extension and that TIF has expired now and it has to come back onto the tax rolls. So the difference in those properties in terms of their taxable value from nineteen eighty-nine to now is estimated to be fourteen point eight million dollars. That comes back to our tax base and it's considered new construction for this particular tax year. And that's what's driving this increase, that more than hundred and five percent. So it doesn't affect our taxing, um, it affects our taxing capacity, but not the tax rate itself, to be clear. So our estimated levy. This year, we're, uh, I'm recommending to you to levy for ninety-two million dollars. That will protect us in the sense that it maximizes the full extent there, you're legally entitled to to levy. And that represents a seven point four percent increase over the prior year's extension. So essentially, the Board of Education collected um eighty-nine million dollars last year. We're asking for a seven point four percent increase and that's why we're triggering the truth in taxation law requirements. That's why we have to go through, we have to go, there's certain things that we have to do every year. We have to do a public hearing this year and uh make sure that we comply with all those requirements. And that increase is primarily due to uh the new construction and the TIP one expiration, so that we can capture that and not necessarily the cap funds. But we expect that we're going to collect nine, eighty-nine point eight million dollars after it's all said and done, based off of the current estimates. So like I said earlier, whenever the levy request itself exceeds more than hundred and five percent of the prior year's extension or what you collected, we have to hold a hearing. Since it's seven point four percent, that exceeds five percent and we're going to go through those procedures. And we also have a required with some newer laws that we provide some disclosures about how much, where our fund balances is, are and our twenty twenty-six budget. We'll do that next month. What's interesting and what's driving that collection lower is because we collected last year four point one million dollars to pay off our final debt payment. And so since in actually uh like December thirty-first, we're gonna make the final interest payment and principal payment, all of our debt will be paid off, we're going to collect four point one million dollars less in property taxes than we did last year at four point two. So the overall tax rate decreases. And here's a picture of that tax rate. So you can see for the last five years, it's been right at about uh six cents. It's going to decrease to about four and a point six cents. And um that is due to the PTO constraints, that tax cap, the the CPI requirements. It's paying off our debt and it's driven by strong EAV growth. But essentially, the tax rate itself is going to go down from five point two to four point six and that's almost ten percent. So what does that do for homeowners? Well, as I mentioned earlier, that EAV growth is increasing pretty substantially this year, that eleven percent. That means that the market value, the median value home in Batavia is four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars this year. So that's eleven percent increase over the prior year. And uh the taxes for that particular home is estimated to be six thousand six hundred seventeen dollars, which is actually three hundred and two dollars less than it was the prior year because that tax rate is going down. So what's really driving the lower tax rates is that we're paying off our debt, will be completely debt-free, which is not very common. Most school districts are not debt-free. Uh, but we'll enjoy that uh next year. Taxes will go down. Uh, so to summarize, EAV is going up eleven percent to one point nine billion, probably somewhere thereabouts. We're going to ask for ninety-two million, which is an increase of seven point four percent. But the tax rate's going down by ten percent, primarily because we're paying off that debt. The median home tax bill is going down three hundred two dollars. We're paying off all of our debt and we're going to do a truth in taxation hearing next month and we'll adopt the levy so that we can file it with the clerk by the last Tuesday in December and make sure that we do all the things that we need to do to levy our taxes. Questions that I can answer for you?
Questions? I mean, I always ask this every time we go through this stuff, but like, are you saying, Tony, that if your home went up eleven percent in value, that your tax bill from our portion would still go down?
Yeah, to be clear, and I'm just talking about our portion of taxes. I have, there's.
That's why I always ask.
Yeah, that's a really good question and sometimes I forget that I'm only focused on school district taxes. Surely, other taxing bodies have their own things going on and more likely they're going up. But to be clear, yes, the the values of their home is going up in terms of what they're being taxed on, but that our portion of the tax bill is going down because our rate is going down and primarily because of our, we're paying off that debt and because of the, how the, the effects, the algebra essentially of that tax cap.
It is rather confusing because it's like, this is up, this is down, it's like not uh intuitive how this math works.
It is not intuitive. Indeed. And if you're still confused, please don't be shy, I'd be happy to walk you through it.
Any questions?
My only one that I have is all your front charts you were showing before with the lines going all the wrong way.
Lines going the wrong way?
Is, is this assuming this is your first next year's, is this, that this is included in your next year's budget?
It's an excellent question and I forgot to mention this and I meant to. Uh, thanks for asking. Yes, when we built the twenty twenty-six budget and the board adopted it in August, all these assumptions were built into it because the levy year, it straddles two fiscal years. It'll straddle twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. So if, for example, you chose to do something different with this levy other than what I'm presenting to you, we would have to go back and redo our twenty twenty-six budget and it would affect the twenty twenty-seven budget. But we knew, of course, that Batavia TIP one was expiring. It's, we've known that for a long time. All those assumptions about what it generates in revenue, which is close to six hundred thousand dollars, has already been baked in to the financial forecast that we talked about earlier.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I will entertain a motion that the board estimate, estimate the twenty twenty-five tax levy as presented totaling ninety-two million, which represents a seven point four percent increase over the previous year's extension. The final twenty twenty-five tax levy will be presented for adoption on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, following a true enhanced taxation hearing. Motion by? By Raquel, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Rob. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Garros?
Yes.
Araladu?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Kilberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item seven point three, amplify CKLA on display. Brad?
Yeah, we're going to have my two friends who've been hanging out here for a couple hours.
Thanks, guys, for sticking around. Who won?
I think I won.
This is uh Colleen Gunderson. She is our, she's a third grade teacher at Louise White, but she's also our curriculum and assessment advisory co-chair. She is fantastic. She helps us with everything. We are so appreciative of her and her work on that committee because that committee takes on a lot of work. And then Jake Wyatt, uh, he's a fourth grade teacher at AGS and both of these people are, have given up their time and energy, blood, sweat and tears because they're a part of our ELA SALT team, which has been going through, as you know, the pilot of our CKLA materials and the SALT team has made some decisions. They presented you a rationale for why we should place these materials on display for a public display between now and the next board meeting. And we just wanted Colleen and Jake to share a little bit of the process that the group used to go through this, to select these materials and then a little bit about their experiences in the classroom, actually using these materials with our students.
Thank you. Uh, so we wanted to give you a little glimpse at how we got to this point. Last fall, we were able to put together an elementary team that represented five of our six elementary schools. Every grade level was represented. We have two reading specialists who were able to join us as well as some administrators from the elementary level and the central office level. We spent a lot of time last fall going in, uh, doing some in-depth learning around the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan with the guidance of our ELA consultant. During that time, we were able to complete a gap analysis to determine whether our current resource met those requirements, to the point where we felt comfortable continuing on or adjusting it. Our team did determine that we needed to pivot and find a different resource that would better fit those seven components. So that led us into um vetting about a dozen or so resources and then determining which uh one we wanted to field test, which is the one we're bringing to you this evening, CKLA. It is currently being field tested in twenty-two classrooms and so we also wanted to share a little bit of the story of how that field test has looked so far this year.
And I want to say, I, I'm going to be talking about the experience of using the materials, but I want to thank Colleen and Jen Hicks in particular. I felt like the process we used has been very thorough. I felt very, um, I feel very, very um supported by the team of teachers who are leading this initiative. I feel like we came to a, an agreement in a way that was um in the best interest of the kids. I feel like this is one of the better processes I've seen for um solving a problem that we had in the district. So if you would go to the next slide, there are some pictures here. I know they're kind of small. Couple of things I'm just going to speak to as far as the um experience of using these materials. One of the instructional shifts that Colleen and I spoke about yesterday is that in the past when we did uh small group reading, a lot of times we changed the um difficulty of the text for students and this is really looking at, we are now giving students strategies to access grade level text. So all students are experiencing the same uh complex grade level texts and given strategies to help them achieve with that rigor in the, in the material. So um I know I've been doing some poetry recently and some of the poems, uh, today we read a poem uh by Walt Whitman that was, it was challenging. It was, there was a lot of um figurative language, a lot of uh hidden meaning in the, in the poem. And thi- this program and their materials are giving the kids strategies to access that uh thinking. So I think that's um really positive. One of the things we've identified as a strength, uh, in the ICLP, there's a section discussing oracy, which is spoken, uh, spoken communication. There's a lot of emphasis on students talking with partners, talk, talking in groups uh and then teaching students explicitly, how do you add on to your ideas? How do you use the vocabulary from the lessons within your, within your uh spoken communication? And then going along with that, there's a lot of writing. Um, and one of the things I know we had spoken about um was a need was a more rigorous writing instruction and uh students are writing every day. One of the things I've enjoyed so far about these materials is that because it's thematically organized, the CK and CKLA stands for Common Knowledge. So Core Knowledge, sorry. And the um, it's like we just did a unit on medieval times, so the reading, the writing, the speaking was anchored in common understanding, core understanding, sorry. Core knowledge from the unit. So you're giving students the background knowledge to be able to communicate effectively, read effectively, write effectively within that um framework. So uh those are the things for me that have been uh huge highlights. And then these are some of the pictures captured by the reps uh from their field visits. I took a couple from a student workbook and some uh writing pieces.
So uh hopefully you were able to hear just a little bit of how CKLA is helping create curious, empowered readers and writers who ask questions of their teachers, of their parents, of their community um and are excited then to share what they discover. And we really feel this resource will effectively support strategic plan priority one. We're really proud to bring it to you, to recommend that we put it on display and hopefully you'll consider approving it.
Jen, I'm going to put you on the spot. Do you want to say anything? Do you want to add anything?
Well, um, it has been an honor to work with the ELA SALT team because it really represents four years' worth of work. When we did a program evaluation, we had a writing SALT team and then the work really analyzing the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan really is requiring us to make shifts in our literacy instruction and it came at a great time for Batavia. And I was thinking back to what um Colleen and Jake were talking about and that core knowledge is a way to support students who are coming to us from a wa- variety of experiences and backgrounds. As you were looking at the Illinois School Report card, some of the observations that Brad pointed out will provide, you know, this resource will provide the opportunity for us to support students in their reading, in their knowledge. And as Jake said, it's exciting to see kids um pumped up about the Middle Ages and being able to share. We had a teacher share at parent-teacher conferences. The parents were in the hallway. The parents were in the hallway talking about Greek mythology and Greek gods and goddesses, and that was in a second grade classroom. So it is permeating all of Batavia. The kids are excited, they can't wait to share with you their skills. And so the team is really honored, as they have said, their work to find a resource that they really are seeing the impact already. And they're only twelve weeks in, and the amount of shifts in twenty-two classrooms and the honesty and just growth mindset has been huge. There's no perfect resource out there, there are things that we're working through, but the team has really moved forward with kind of a solution-focused approach and said, we're gonna solve anything. There isn't anything that we can't figure out. So I appreciate Colleen and Jake being here tonight and being able to share their work and the work of their team, and, um, we can ans- answer, you know, any more questions that you have, but thank you.
I just have one, and I want to say thank you for the presentation. I love having the teachers here to talk about their experience. Jake, you talked about how this was a very supportive process. Could you just elaborate a little bit about, on that, a little more compared to maybe previous experiences you've had?
No, I don't know exactly what to attribute that to, but I feel like everybody on the, I was talking to Colleen this at our last meeting. I feel like everybody on the team consistently comes prepared to solve problems, think through. And I think you guys had a really clear process for, we look, it's been a long process, and we've really been looking at a lot of different things. We, we looked at, how many resources did we, did we end up?
At least a dozen, yeah.
Yeah, so we looked at a lot, we had, we looked through IAR questions, we looked at standards, we, we mapped out a lot of different things. So it was a real, um, clearly laid-out process. And then the second part to that, I would just say, is that I, in my school, my team is the only team field testing. So, um, I've consistently been emailing the other, uh, field test members and the SALT members, um, to get support. And I'm getting very clear, um, information from other people. There's been a couple times we've experienced struggles, and other people said, yeah, I'm feeling kind, I'm having the same, the same struggle. Here's how we've approached that. And then also, we've had a lot of access to the, the company reps.
Well, I just love that, because this is the second time we've heard tonight where teachers in different buildings are collaborating and using, uh, resources or sharing, you know, successes and failures to sort of, um, I'm not sure what the right term is, but like, we're leveraging our own strengths internally to help advance, uh, what we're doing. So I'm, I'm always like, well, you know, maybe this is a magic in a bottle, but if we can try to keep replicating these kind of things, uh, you know, it just make our processes a lot better, and our people will be more engaged and enthusiastic when we're doing something like this. Because I know it's gotta be quite challenging when you're doing something new.
Yeah, and they're, they're doing a good job representing all of their elementary colleagues through this process. They have done, they brought back a lot of feedback to the team. So we've really, Jen has, uh, made it a priority to let this team, this SALT team, the Subject Area Leadership Team, really drive the train and drive the change. So that team recommended that we move forward with this. And then Jen brought that to our Monday morning CAC meeting, just, um, to make sure that they were all on board. So CAC has agreed that this should move forward to Tom, and Tom was on the call as well. So we got it in the board book and available for the board to vote on. It would be on display for, the materials are sitting in the back there. It would be on display between this meeting and your December meeting. And at your December meeting, uh, we can ask you to approve, uh, those. We'll give you a little bit more cost estimates. It's a big price tag, um, but there's a lot of really good quality materials within this. So we will, that will be the process moving forward if you approve that tonight.
I just have a quick question. So this resource material is hard copy as well as digital, or just?
Yeah, Jen, you want to talk about, or they, because they have it in their room.
Uh, both, both components are present. The students have hard copies of both readers and the, like, instructional work pages. Teachers have hard copies of the manuals, but then we also have, um, complete online access to everything as well. And the students have an online platform that they utilize for some of their skill practice and for some assessment.
Yeah, I, I would just add to that, some of the, it's interesting, some of the units have different components. Like we're, my current reader is also the workbook, because it's like a little journal, so the kids are able to highlight. It's really nice for the kids to be able to access, go back in the text, find things. That's a, that a really positive, um, positive piece of these materials.
So then, um, if next in December we approve this, so then for the following year, we just need to buy, like, the hard copies? We don't need to do the digital, or like, how?
No, there's, there's ongoing cost. Jen, you want to talk a little bit about that?
There would be ongoing costs to have access to the platform and then the, the student consumable workbook. So there are some of the readers that we would use yearly, but then there would be the, um, reoccurring costs for the student consumables. So the platform is required for the assessment pieces, and to be able to have the teachers, um, display, there's a, presentations are made for the teachers. So we really need both platforms, as well as the print materials, to be able to make this program and use this resource to the utmost ability for our students to be able to learn, so we need both.
It'll be upfront cost and then, um, ongoing cost. But that's not unusual these days.
We will get both of those in December?
Yeah.
Both the ongoing and.
Yeah, you'll see it broken down by both the consumable pieces and the online pieces.
This will be probably a good opportunity come December for the board to, um, start exercising in reality how we're gonna have to prioritize resources in our district. This is not gonna come at a low price tag. And when we start committing to these things, we have to understand on the backend with the projections you saw this evening, how we have to figure out what we're gonna do then to sustain the fiscal responsibility of this district, while we do what is absolutely necessary to provide the best educational experience for our kids, right? There's gonna be a, a good tension point here of what we can afford to do with everything that's in front of us. So, just giving you a heads up, that's all, I'm just giving you a heads up. But I love the fact that there's a, uh, very viable option here that our teachers are supportive of, that we're seeing already immediate gains and results with our students. That's super positive, and it's all framed around our Illinois Learning Comprehensive, or the Illinois ICLP.
Yeah, I'll forget. There you go.
Thank you.
Got it.
Sorry. Brad, I think.
This to me is like a really visible, um, example of how the board's strategic plan should work. So we had teachers were not happy with, um, our previous reading curriculum. They brought that information into the strategic plan process. It became one of our goals, we focused on it together, we've made collaborative decisions about that, and we're moving forward with it. That, to me, is the power of our strategic plan, because again, what we focus on gets better. And this is still in progress, but we're seeing great momentum here, um, of where we can make a, a true difference. Because that priority number one, the number one strategy is improve literacy instruction. So it's a good example of that.
Any, any more questions? Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion that the Board of Education place on display Amplify CKLA Third Edition for a period of one month in accordance with POE policy six to ten instructional materials. Motion by Danielle, second by Katie. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Gerrols?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Kilberg?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Suiseki?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Item number seven point four, Adopt or Amend Board Policy, second reading.
Okay, I hope this is a little bit of a faster item for everyone. This is the second read, we went over it at the last board meeting. I don't think there were any questions between last meeting to this meeting, so I kind of turn it over to you for discussion or a vote.
Any discussion items or questions? Okay. I will entertain a motion to adopt or amend the updated policies as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Katie.
Second.
Second by Raquel. Cindy, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Slager?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Kilberg?
Yes.
Suiseki?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Gerrols?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, thank you. Item seven point five, New Course Proposals.
We talked about this again last month, um, there are three new course proposals that we would like the board to approve to put in our course materials that are already in there, but we can't run them officially without your approval. Uh, the Field Experience, which is a revamp of our current link program to make it compliant with the State of Illinois's, career pathways process, where we have to have sixty hours, and we have to teach kids employability skills. So that's a revamp of a, a current existing course. The other course is a revamp of an existing graphics art course to be a little bit more in tune with, uh, where graphics art is headed. And then the last course is a middle school course, which gives sixth grade students an option if they're, um, looking at exploring what other exploratories would happen in the middle school. All of these would function with existing staff, it's a repurposing of staff. So they are looking for your approval to offer these courses to our students for next year.
Questions? All right, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the new courses to be included in the course registration process for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year. Motion by?
So moved.
So moved by Aaron.
Second.
Second by Rob. Cindy, please lead us in our roll call vote.
Meadows?
Yes.
Gonzalez Thomas?
Yes.
Gerrols?
Yes.
Arlandu?
Yes.
Suiseki?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
All right.
Kilberg?
I was waiting for it. I was like, did I, did I miss that?
Cindy tricked us.
Yeah. All right, that concludes our motions. Thank you, everybody, for the in-depth information and presentations, appreciate it. All right. Well, technically, we moved item eight point three around, uh, eight point one to after eight point three, so we have to hold to that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So item eight point two is, uh, building board tours. So if I recall correctly, this was us trying to determine an ability for a board to get out to go see buildings as we have done in the past. So we want to kind of verify if that's the case of what the board would like to do, and if there's any comments or thoughts about that.
And then the only note from the administration is, um, we're kind of asking if the board is going to consider dates that we look at, um, late January or past that, and then maybe prior to spring break, right? So maybe that window.
Okay. And in the past, we did these as a special meeting. And I think last time we did, for what we did for the construction stuff, kind of like two dates are options. So, any comments or thoughts? Is that manageable?
Yeah, does the, does the board have the appetite still, I suppose, is one thing I want to ask?
Yes.
Yes, I've seen all.
Uh, so I have a question, if it's a special meeting, does that mean the public can attend to?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, because that's something. Not much we can do about it that way. Well, I think that's a good thing, actually, because if we go to certain buildings where there's been an issue, that would be an opportunity for the public to see what the work's been done.
I think it would be good to, for, to invite, um, BIC. I don't know if those parents that run the PTOs, if they ever have the opportunity to go to different schools.
No, it's a good idea. Probably some of them would jump on that. Okay, uh, then I suppose, so the magic question here is the dates. Does the board prefer we work on, like, two options? And say, here are your two options, can you please decide which one you want to commit to? That might seem to be the easiest.
Yeah.
Approach, does that sound good? One or two dates?
Two dates.
Two dates? And then we just go with the majority of whatever people say is the best date for them? Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, for me, it works.
For you, it is? Everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So the majority for the one date.
You guys got that, right? Okay.
And that's to go to all the schools.
We, what it would be is an all-school, uh, visit. Part of the reason why we need a little bit of time to, to, uh, prepare for that is because we'll arrange for transportation. Uh, we also want to make sure that, uh, since it is a special board meeting, Aaron, as you pointed out, and since there's some idea to invite people, we have to carefully plan this. If we have the public in the buildings while students are in session, um, you know, we want to be sensitive to particular programs or classroom instruction activities that are occurring. I am anticipating principals will also, like, want to, like, hey, who in the building on this day is gonna be doing something that the board should see? Right, and so, um, you know, that just takes a little bit of coordination, because we're gonna be on a timeline. And we also have to publish that timeline so the general public can anticipate where to meet you if they're unable to, like, start off, let's just say we started at BHS, but they can only come to Rotolo two hours later. You know, we have to kind of coordinate that so that the public can anticipate where the board meeting is occurring.
So we're doing this during the day?
Uh, the original discussion was the board members wanting to see students and programming, the building alive kind of thing. Is this not something the board wants to do?
I just, I won't be able to attend, but I'm just one person. I can't take vacation time to tour schools.
Sure. Do you guys want to do it in the evening with the buildings?
I mean, if the point was to see students in action, or did you want to see the schools and hear about them?
Uh, for me, I wanted to kind of see the new spaces in function. I haven't seen that.
Yeah.
But I've been in all the buildings already, so I'm not sure if this is necessarily for me, per se. I mean, I'm just saying, that, that'd be my interest, but if other people want to do it in the evening, maybe we get better turnout from the public. I mean, I'm open to that, too.
I'm good with whatever the majority, but I know, like, Aaron said, how they are using the new spaces. Then also, for me, I'd like to see the before, right, of Louise White, and like, whatever else is gonna take place. Just, for me, I have a better picture. So, I'm indifferent.
Does the board feel like that we need to go to every building?
I mean, for me personally, if we go into the new spaces, that's. Well, that's what I'm, I'm putting it out there, because it's a lot of buildings to get through, and a lot of building, like, the high school is a long building to tour in and of itself.
I mean, I would be fine with just seeing one or like, for, because it was the high school, and then Rotolo had the, the same library. So we just do one or, like, just one of them? I'm, I'm okay with that. Just whatever would be the time, or whatever things would be the best to go to, like, whether it be the high school or.
So it's almost like, kind of let the administration, from your perspective, kind of pick the guided tour for a three-hour event of sorts, and then work our way through that? Does that make sense to most people? Based on whatever's going on that day, whatever they might feel is important for us to see? Is it, it sounds a little more manageable, frankly?
And this is during building operational time? Like with students in session?
If people want to do it in the evening, I'm fine with that, too. I think we really did a chance to have Danielle join us, so, which is important. What was the genesis of this talking point, actually? How many have a, kind of an opinion on wanting to see it during class time the kids are in?
It would be nice, but I don't think it's absolutely necessary. I think the original thought was, like, seeing the buildings.
Just seeing the spaces.
Right, because I haven't been in most of the elementary schools in particular. And we're making decisions about warm, safe, dry, and.
Right, I'm okay with that, then, if you want to do it after hours.
The only one I've been to is Louise White, which is like the sister of the storm. I was like, it's the same.
Well, that's the thing, is that's part of the consideration, right? There's, there's a Grace McQuain, a Grace McQuain.
Right.
Let's sort, prototype, you know, so.
You could probably predict what's gonna happen now.
I can.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, at least with head nods, is let the dis, let the administration kind of determine the tour and the events on the tour, and the spaces on the tour. And then, uh, it does not have to be during the day, but that's a part of the organizational process, right? That whatever might make sense for the timeframe to show. And if that is a, you know, whatever works best time, so if that's half-half, because also, you're right, there are afternoon, there are evening functions, there are things like that that are occurring. That might be difficult to work around.
Okay.
Okay? All right, item eight point three, Board Approval Templates. So this is, I think we almost felt like we got a preview of that today. That was basically a template, because in the past, we talked about some kind of consistency between how information is presented to us so that we can kind of feel like we're understanding all the parts and pieces that we need to understand as it relates to making a good decision for an approval or not in that event. So Tom created a template that everybody's gonna effectively follow to allow for us to do that. Does anybody have any, it, it, of course, depending on what they're presenting, it's gonna get tweaked, so it may not be applicable, whatever else, but it's a good place to start.
I did ask Tom, um, about services, um, like, you know, if it involves, like, um, curriculum or interventions or anything like that. Well, what's the, gonna be the face-to-face time, like, you know, that they're gonna have, you know, is the. Well, what's the, gonna be the face-to-face time, like, you know, that they're gonna have, you know, is the consultant, you know, in-house, in district, or local?
So like, from a consultant perspective?
Yeah.
What's, or a?
Like, I know we have one consultant that does he, is it hearing? I don't remember. Uh, but they do some type of, I remember, uh, and she's, uh, she's, she's not local, but it's something to do with students, and I don't remember what it is. But just, you know, something like that.
Just to help, for awareness.
Yeah.
Right, and understand being able to make a judgment about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's one thing I asked, is if something, like, if, you know, obviously, if it's a construction company, they're gonna be on site.
Does everybody feel that's an important criteria to include? My only comment on it is if it's a valuation, if it's a, you're making a decision based on that, or if it's just a critical, is it just a piece of information to know? Right? And then you can make your own decision based on. I don't want it to be implied in my head, as me only, of like, oh, that's bad if they're not here, because maybe that's just how that type of services run, you know, or that they're the best person for the job even though they're not here. So, but I don't disagree with being able to know that for.
Well, no, like, to, for certain professional developments, they might have someone come in, a speaker come in.
And then that's the face time, right?
Right. So like, yes, they're, he or she lives in Jersey, however, they're coming in for a PD.
So they have face time with?
Yeah.
You know, on, on premises time?
Right.
I think I had mentioned, um, knowing whether this is a one-time consultant who's training staff to take something over, or if it's going to be a recurring.
And then that's probably true with anything, right? Is it a one-time expense or is it a recurring expense, whether it's training or software or whatever?
Right.
Right? 'Cause those things can accumulate quickly, as Tony, I'm sure, is aware. Tom, you hear anything you're overly concerned about on those two items, at least having them as a?
Uh, so I may note a, um, something to the effect of what is the face-to-face time with consultant adding any data or a section that would discuss that or share that kind of information? Raquel, is that, did I capture that correctly? And then the second one, uh, Kristen, kind of outlining somewhere within that report, a, uh, whether the expenditure for that use of that group is a one-time expenditure training, or is this gonna be a repeat, repeating kind of annual item? Et cetera, right?
Well, and I'm gonna say it's not just like a consultant order, there's a, could be plenty of services that we are going out for.
No, absolutely, I mean, like.
Like, they were mentioned before when they were studying the, um, the, talking about the, the, putting the why can I not have the, the amplify thing on, that they had face-to-face time and resources they were able to do online, live talking to people or whatever that's, so whatever it might be, Dan Thurby might be having some people that interface with him and come in and check things out, you know, whatever it might be.
Yeah.
So.
Alright, I'll make adjustments to that and share that with the board.
Okay, adjusted location for item eight point one is board follow-up on discussions as it specifically relates to ICE. So there are a couple of things on that. Uh, one, I just wanna say I appreciate everybody coming today and sending emails and everything else like that. Um, this is our opportunity to kind of talk through our thoughts, um, as it relates to that item. Uh, we've talked at the last meeting about that and are continuing the discussion today. The goal today in the end is to determine if we're going to move on to some next step of that or not, about whether or not that is following as an option, um, press policies that have come out very recently that I think provide some real good guidance, but that's me offering an opinion that I'm trying hard not to do right now. Um, and, or if this is something else like a resolution or whatever else we feel is important. I'd like, if we can frame this around kind of like the kind of issue, and then we can talk about the the adoption process of whatever that is as a separate thing, which we kind of know about what we're feeling we would want to do. So I'm gonna turn it over to you guys to kind of start the conversation. I'd like, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I'm in favor of moving forward on drafting, reading, and approving policy, uh, that would indicate that all district buildings are not, uh, places where ICE can stage or conduct operations.
I don't think it's a surprise. I am also in favor, based on the last couple of months of conversation. I think it's an absolute necessity.
I agree. Um, I spoke to Representative Herschauer, too, if anyone is interested in learning more about the scope or intent behind the recent legislation that passed. She said she'd be interested, she could come and talk to us if we're interested in that. I'll throw that out there. And as a side note, she said, and I know this is a board decision, but she said she would be willing to periodically come and give us updates on state legislation that affects schools if we're interested in that. And I know we don't, we don't, we're not getting into the specifics yet, but there is, like, Craig mentioned, press that's come out recently, um, with both, both a policy in regards to that new legislation, and then, um, some procedures as well that could be adopted.
You can get into those specifics. My specific I was talking about was just about adopting whatever we're gonna adopt, so feel free to bring that up if you like.
Uh, yeah, so there's, there's a specific policy, and then there's administrative procedures, which are quite lengthy, that talks about, you know, specific, um, non-judicial warrant and specifies different actors, like superintendent, and what the action is that they would take. And, um, a principal, what action they would take if law enforcement or ICE showed up. Um, so it's quite extensive. And I guess I would propose that we, in the very least, adopt those. I mean, we, that's part of the process that we do anyway. And I would be willing to look at additions to that as well.
Uh, I think I would be in- interested in moving in for it specifically in making sure that we're in alignment with HB thirty-two forty-seven. And now that we have a press update, uh, even fast-tracking that process, I haven't talked to Raquel about it, but like, normally we have a process where we get the update, we set a meeting, and then we do it, and then we have a first reading. And, uh, I know we have some meetings coming up, so it's, I mean, it's, I'm not sure Raquel's schedule is with the holiday coming up, but uh, I'd be open to, uh, having a meeting set relatively quickly so that we could move at maybe a faster pace than normally we do on other updates.
Can you guys explain what, what is that, what, what does the fast-track look like?
So, normally how it works is like, we have press, press sends us updates, we set a meeting, it's a public meeting. We go through them all, we have a lot of questions, we have like, this is what it currently says, this is the recommended changes. And we go through it pretty methodically, ask a lot of questions, a lot of the executive team is there. Uh, I mean, some are just a few changes of words, they're not that detailed.
Footnotes, right?
Footnotes.
A lot of times you see, hey, it's just a footnote change, or we're removing this word, which affects all of these other policies.
This would be a fairly hefty overhaul, I think of, is it seven, one fifty?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it's just a paragraph, actually, in seven.
Is it? I thought I, when I read it, it was.
The policy's a paragraph, right?
There's an amendment.
Seven, one fifty AP.
That's the procedure.
Yeah.
So the procedure is like the.
The policy is.
The policy is not.
Got it.
Uh, so then we do that, and then we prepare the documents, then we come to the next board meeting, we have a first reading, we ask questions. Then we, you know, based off that comment, if we have to meet again, we'll meet again, and then we have a second meeting, a, uh,
A second reading.
Second reading and we approve like we did tonight.
Yeah.
And so what I'm proposing with fast-tracking would be, and that usually takes like Three months. Three months, right? And what I'm saying is, because we have sort of an unusual circumstance where we have some board meetings coming up that are not our regular third Tuesday of every month, we could possibly get together, go through it on the policy side. We have one of these upcoming meetings with the principals or one of those type of things where we could, I'm not sure if we can do that in that meeting, but we could.
Well, no, I mean, we, the agenda has been posted, yeah.
So then we could do a first reading, and then the second reading could be like, I mean, I don't have the calendar memorized, but like, I know we have a regular scheduled meeting on, I think, the sixteenth or something.
Yeah.
So then that could be the second reading, so that would actually be like a very expedited compared to our normal process.
And then.
Did you mention in the replies that it's actually possible to do first and second in one?
The first reading, effectively, because this is, this is effectively coming in alignment with an incoming state law. So, in theory, we could skip that and effectively go to our next meeting on the ninth or sixth?
Fourth, we have meetings on the fourth, ninth, and the sixteen.
Fourth, ninth, and sixteen. So we could do one in any of those three, to, if we wanted to skip it. There's two questions I have for you guys. One, I'm all for making decisions about what we should fast-track and what we not. I just want that to be our decision about what we're fast-tracking. He, that's not his decision, any teams, right? So, so if that's the case, then I'm certainly all for it, and particularly, I mean, if we're effectively right now discussing adopting presses process, it makes their process a lot simpler. And then continuing evaluation if we choose to, how to tweak and modify and amend poli- the procedures if we find it is lacking or in any way, shape, or form for us.
So I, I mean, my personal, I mean, fast-tracking one hundred percent, I would feel more comfortable if we met and we had a first reading, just in case there's something that you guys wanna add
Yeah.
or change. That, that's just, 'cause, you know, we gotta look.
That's true, it gives everybody here an opportunity to say, I think we should tweak this in.
To read it and say, can we do this?
Yeah.
That's just my personal opinion, but, you know, have a first reading. Unfortunately, I will not be at the December fourth.
Uh, can I offer a suggestion then, maybe, to help the board with a streamline, uh, to streamline that? If we held the policy committee meeting, um, and I can solicit feedback for any board member who could not attend the policy committee meeting, 'cause that's an, a- also an opportunity for discussion and dialogue about the policies, uh, review. Um, if people could be there, we can, we can hash it out. If you're unable to attend, you could always email me, and I'll make sure that our co-chairs have that information as part of the feedback process when we meet for the committee. Um, we could do that, and then what we could do then, uh, because i- i- it's your protocol.
Yeah.
So we could bring it then to one of those board meetings and, and have it already deliberated. And then, um, you know, if the board wanted to explain, uh, that you're going immediately to a second reading and for action, we can do that with this one in particular. That way, Raquel, to your point, you'd be still able to be part of the process through committee if you can't be at the fourth, if, if we're able to meet before the fourth.
So what, what that would require is knowing when your date is, and then knowing to date. And we have to post it for forty-eight hours before, I mean, so. But also, people need to kind of read it and digest and figure things out and ask questions and whatever, so.
Right. I'm more concerned with how
Everybody.
Yeah, for you guys getting us what we need.
Feedback.
Like, I don't know how quickly you can turn that around.
So, by using the press policy structure, I feel more confident that you could move quicker. Because it's already been legally reviewed by an advising body that serves us, right? One of the things the administration's doing right now, we've actually been working on getting a few date of options to you both to see when we can convene a policy committee meeting 'cause of the October updates. But obviously, what we could do is make this the priority item. I don't wanna speak out of turn for my team. Yeah?
I, I heard back from everybody.
Okay.
Um, the second is probably the best.
Okay. December second? It, just something to take a look at and you can give back to me? That's when we'd all be available and be able to be part of the policy committee, however.
It's a Tuesday, I think.
We were looking at, we were looking at one, the first, I was gonna say one, two. We were looking at the first and second, and then I believe the tenth. But if we go to the tenth.
I can probably do the first or the second.
Okay, so the second, sounds good so far. Second's good for you, you think? Okay.
Can I just get, um, I don't know if it'll be four, but I can get back, I can send an email, like, I'm good at four o'clock or whatever.
Awesome. Um, and then, so, I, who, who asked, who asked me the question? Sorry. Kristen, were you the one that asked the question?
I think so, about.
What was the question?
Oh, yeah.
Well, it was about the second reading, but if we have kind of a meeting.
Right, so like, for example, you know, if, if we're coming to you and saying we need this board, board policy, and it goes through first and second reading, that's, we're following your protocol. As a board, you know, there's a, Craig already stated it, we have legislative change on the horizon. Uh, you as a board are making a collective and consensus-based decision on how you wanna handle this, so I think it sounds like based on this discussion, all are in agreement. That's super, it gives us clear direction. We can prepare some things here. Um, the other thing, too, then, with the procedures, the statute will require school districts to have the procedures ready to be implemented and executed at the beginning on July one, twenty twenty-six. Now, just so you're aware, after doing a crosswalk between what our current practice is and what I saw in the city's ordinance, I feel, and what's, and what's with, uh, required in HB thirty-two forty-seven, I do think we'll be able to present some administrative, the, the administrative procedures between what press has and then what we're doing probably before the summer, so that there's time for you to digest and make sure that you're comfortable with it, because a lot of our protocols and practice right now are very similar in language to the practice. So I feel really confident about that.
I'm confused on the, sorry, on the policy part and then the procedure part. So we don't discuss the procedure part, we just discuss the, sort of like the, what was that?
So we vote on policies, we don't vote on procedures.
Right, but it, it, the amendment part that.
Press, but press put out this procedure, so how does that?
We don't vote on procedures.
Right.
We just have to make sure that they're implemented.
How then does our pol- the pol- so what they have put out on press, that policies they're recommending would effectively, what is the recommendation would then make that procedure effective? That we're not, we're not writing, but like, our policy then, I guess, like, we wanna make sure that our policy will
Go ahead, man.
affect that procedure.
Well, the, well, we vote on policy, and then the administration has to make sure we have procedures that
Correct.
support those policies.
I'm just saying, the press has procedures outlined, so how do we? If we adopt presses policy, does that ensure that you all can meet those procedures, and that it's covering those procedures, I guess is what I'm asking?
Yeah, so their body of, of attorneys, when they draft what they feel is a strong and modeled policy, and that's why they put in the press update behind that, they'll develop a template of what they recommend as the procedures that supports the new policy that you're considering.
Follow?
And that's what, that's what we would follow then.
And our policy, if we were to, if we were to effectively just take presses policy, I just wanna confirm that I'm understanding that correctly, based on what the update is, then you would most likely take the procedure that press is recommending based on that policy we, we accept, we went ahead with. Right? We, it would, yes, for sure, or what would?
Well, we could come to the policy committee and say like, hey, you know, this is not something we have as a resource in our district. So, do we have something that would meet that? You know, I mean, there, there might have to be some nuances, you know, that we have to dive into in it. But, um, the procedures that they'll be recommending are definitely going to un- align with the policy itself.
Okay, so I just, there's some parts of the procedure that I think are excellent, right? As far as like, you need to have something displayed in the office, you need to have, um, education all the way down. There were some really amazing parts to it, and I just wanna ensure that for our policy-writing purposes, that we don't need to state something more specific, and that is something that will be done. I know we can't tell you how to do it, right, but that it will be met. I think is where my concern is, and just to ensure that, I just wanna make sure that we can ensure some of those things are when we decide on that.
So normally, when we have a policy, there's a procedure with, like, we'll move that in the first reading. Like, I may not go over it, but it's attached to the packet.
So you can read it.
Yeah, so it's like, hey, you know, we updated this policy and then these procedures as well. But that, again, is just for the board's awareness. So you can, when we do it, when we have our first policy or our policy meeting, and they give us the, the agenda, the procedure will be in there of how we're gonna adopt it, I guess, or how they'll use it. So you can look to make sure that it has what wording you want in there, like, the training, not that they're gonna get rid of the training, but let's just say it says, yes, I wanna make sure, like, can we make sure that that training's in there?
And that would be in the policy language or the procedure language?
Procedure.
That's procedure.
Then how are we not controlling procedure? I'm so confused by this, I think, it just, so we are still controlling procedure in that effect, if we're attaching a procedure to a policy?
It's not, but we don't, it's not something that we wrote on, but.
Okay.
So, I'd.
It's like our recommendation?
Yeah, it's like, this is what they have to follow, this is the procedure to follow this policy.
I mean, often.
So we are making the procedure.
It's not, we don't make it, but we, it's like, I'm gonna say this, like, if I have a.
I just wanna make sure that we're like, we're making sure our wording is strong on the policy.
Right.
So that if we are not having anything to do with procedure, this policy has what it needs to have in it, and that's my main concern, so however that needs to happen.
It is the jurisdiction and the purview of the board to effectively say, we did this policy.
Uh-huh.
And we don't think you're enforcing or enacting this policy in a way that's meaningful and lives up to the policy, right, as a board.
Right.
So I think the way that the, our only jurisdiction is we govern policy, right?
Right.
Press does everybody a favor by giving them a template, cuz that was a good way to put it, that would support that policy. Tom's team would develop a response to that, I would imagine, for us to say, these are the ways we can support it, these are the ways we can't support that. Procedure and here's our solutions to try to come into alignment with that if we can't currently do that. It would be really atypical that I've ever heard or even experienced here that. When there's a specific procedure that kind of comes from press, that's already been validated by their attorneys. It's le- cuz the big challenge on some of this that I've been hearing is how legally defensible is this stuff? Right, that they've kind of figured out, this is, if you follow these steps, your attorney can protect you. Or they can help enforce this, right, later on, so. This is pretty loaded as a, you know, while we're not approving the procedure. We get to state that if that procedure isn't supporting the policy, that they need to adjust to do so, right? Cuz if you start loading things from procedure into policy, you start baking it in and that's where things get convoluted. Because you need to amend procedures sometimes based on what the field situation is at that time.
Yeah, I guess, and from, for just personal things, and we can get more into that, is like, I wanna make sure there's some sort of educational piece. To me, that should be in policy, I'm not telling you what the procedure is, but, so, but. It may not nee- I'm hearing that it may not need to be specifically.
No, but we could all say.
Yeah.
I think this needs to be, we could all discuss it and say, Tom and team, I think you need to come up with a training procedure. Because we think that's an important facet of it and you need to provide to us if you're not going to do that because it's their purview to enact things. You kinda gotta make us happy about understanding why that's not critical, you know?
I would like to mention the, like, the timeline, well, I know that it, we have until July, um. From things that I've heard, we're probably gonna see some of this action moving away from us as the win- as the winter comes. But it's going to be back in the spring, so I guess I'm concerned about not having something in place. I think we can do the policy, but I, I'm hoping that there's some sort of procedure. In place or education that can happen over the winter so that we're prepared.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So I, I just wanna, maybe this'll help the conversation with like a tangible. So in the administrative procedure, one of the draft components right now that, uh, press has shared. Would be, uh, here's an example, calls the bar, the superintendent, building principal or designee will call the board's attorney for guidance throughout the process. That's an administrative procedure that press has suggested. That's also an active protocol in what we do since January twenty-seventh. And we've shared that out with families, staff, our principals, we've talked about this multiple times, in fact, as recently as Tuesday of this week. To reassure everyone is fresh on our protocols and what we would do if this were to be the case in one of our buildings. So that's actually in the procedure, so I'm hoping this go get, so let's shape that conversation. That's not gonna be specifically in policy, but this is a procedural thing that press is recommending to support the board's policy.
I make a, maybe a suggestion. But for staff, like, do they all have these pouches? Like, building staff?
I think so, yeah.
Is there any way that like?
They, the pouches themselves, we generally issue pouches to everybody, but they're not required to use the pouch, I, for example, just have mine attached to my lanyard.
I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could, um, get like. Sorry, Tony, I wanna print something, um, but just for all the, everyone that's employed at BPS. If they can like just attach it to their card on if we see an immigration agency on our school property. First thing you do, second thing, you know, like, I'm gonna be honest, I don't know if I. If a para will know what to do if they're coming from the parking lot and they see trucks rolling up, I really don't know if they know what to do. And I, you know, or, or anybody like that, or, I mean, even like. The building substitutes, like, I don't know if they really know what to do. And I do, I'm just trying to get something so they can, they, they have a reference, like, hey, and again, maybe they don't, don't use the pouches, but just a little.
I think that's a good suggestion, that's about all it can be right now, right?
It's all I'm saying.
So, so it's a good suggestion and I think it's a way to say, hey, this may be one of the ways that we increase awareness, so that's fair. Um, I'm often curious about this as a person who. Was working with a park district and not realizing I was on school property and I was surveying a park that was adjacent to a school and I had the police called on me. And I was politely escorted off the property, no, I was not arrested, so don't start whispering back there. Um, but, um, you know, that, it. The general way, and I don't know if it's here, like, the process for anybody that's unknown on school property is a pretty quick notification toward. Principal or whatever that process is, so I'd be curious to see what the difference is. I'm not minimizing your training, your, your request on being able to make sure everybody's aware of the pol- the, the process and procedure. I'm just trying to figure out what's, how different it really is.
I mean, so, I know that this is, sometimes I know when it's nice and warm out. And there's a pretty good track behind Rotolo that will have people come on to the property and walk.
Okay.
And sometimes there's gym classes that happen to use the outside, it's a warmout, so again, it's like. If you see someone walking, are you really gonna call the cops, I mean, maybe you should, but I'm just saying, like.
Yeah.
But they just feel like they can, and sometimes they bring even their dogs.
So that's, that's a good item as they're, as they are evaluating the policy, the procedures, to be able to figure out how they might. Fit a methodology of, of education in there.
So I think the primary concern then right now is, let's go ahead and address the policy first, cuz that's what always guides everything else anyway. Let's get that in place, um. Sounds like December second will be the targeted date for a policy committee meeting, um, and then, as I mentioned.
Everyone will be encouraged to attend, correct?
So, right, so as I mentioned earlier, if you can attend, great, and then let's all work together on that. Um, if you're unable to attend, please feel free to send me, um, thoughts and notes so that I can make sure it gets shared with our co-chairs, then we can bring that into the discussion for.
Do we have a date for the feedback, like a email, do you have a, do we have a date, a deadline, is it like the second?
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna talk about it on the fourth, it'd be pretty quick.
Well, no, the policy meeting is for the second.
I know, but then if we're gonna vote on it.
I'm not sh- we gotta be careful cuz if, I'm not sure there's enough time to get things amended and tweaked in our agenda.
Well, just remember, we're only doing policy.
Right.
Right.
We're gonna address just the policy.
Yeah.
Um, we can have the agendas prepared, okay, even for the December fourth meeting.
Okay.
Just because it's on the agenda, if it's not ready, you know, Raquel and Erin, you can share with the board, hey, we made a lot of progress. Not quite there yet.
Okay.
We can't make the motion to make the recommendation for the, tonight on the fourth, but say, but we're pretty close, so the ninth, December ninth meeting, we may have that on the agenda then.
So I think we want two feedbacks then, like, one. You're gonna send out, and you're gonna send out the agenda and the policy prior, so send that out like that's.
The Friday before.
Yeah, the Friday before, so then I need, we would need feedback on that one by the first, preferably the first. If, if you get it the second, I, whatever.
If we can't come.
Yeah, if you can't come.
Friday before, the day after Thanksgiving.
Um.
Yeah?
I think it is.
That Friday?
That's a Friday for Thanksgiving, right?
That's the day after Thanksgiving, which, somewhere around, you send it.
Well, I, but no, no, but I, here's what I heard, Kristen just clarified, that's all, send it if you can't make the policy committee, if you're gonna attend. You're gonna be part of the conversation.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fair.
Then we'll do it together. They're at the committee meeting. Yeah?
Or get your comments as early as possible if you're not gonna make it, so if there's clarity needed, Tom can reach back out.
Okay.
Tom, do you want him to send it to you and copy me or just send it to you?
Well, you should always be copied.
That's what I thought you were gonna say, so copy me on anything that goes to Tom.
But send it to me and we'll, we'll, we'll take care of it, make sure we collect it, if you're gonna be there in person, as Kristen pointed out, no need to email, just show up, we're ready to talk. And we'll go through the committee process.
And so what we'll do is they'll go ahead and prep the meeting with it on the fourth. For doing this, and if it turns out we need to strike it from the agenda cuz it's not quite there yet, you can give an update and then you can choose not to take action that night. And then it will get moved right to the meeting on the ninth, cuz there's plenty of time to do proper notifications for that.
For that one.
Yes. Take advantage of the meetings we have already.
Okay.
Mr. President, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I'll, I'll be working on the, um, look, I'll be working on the, um, red line version. As soon as, you know, I'm able to get that into, it'll be under the proposed.
Yes.
On the website, it'll be, so it'll be available before the meetings.
Perfect, so that.
Before, before the agendas are posted, that will be in the proposed.
Section for the policies, so.
Yeah.
So it gives us all a chance to get it.
And.
Thank Cindy. Thank you, Cindy.
Cindy, would you mind if?
So you'd be able, I'll send an email if you'd like, once I finish it?
Yes, please.
That'd be fantastic.
She knows you guys, she knows all of you, she's got you. Awesome.
Does, anything else that anybody wants to discuss on that?
I would just like, I mean, I would some, like some time to review this resolution, to see if. There's anything else we might be interested in doing in that area.
In addition to like policy and, yeah.
So would you like us to put at least on the ninth or whatever we're meeting, we're approving this on, keep in mind, we're doing a lot of other things on the fourth.
I was just gonna say.
Do we wanna see it, like, you guys feed back information to me and let me know whether you wanna have that as a discussion point?
Well.
You can disagree with.
No, 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 I, I'm just gonna say, the, the nights are gonna run long.
Yeah, yeah.
We separated all these meetings with the knowing because we've experienced what happened in May, right? So, um, the other thing I would say is this, your board policy is what's actually gonna have sticking power in action. A resolution or a proclamation does not. Now, we can issue a statement, the board can issue a statement if the port, board policy gets adopted. But I think drawing attention to the policy is actually where the action takes place and the enforcement of what our behavior is as an organization. If that makes sense, right, cuz like a proclamation is a statement, there's actually no, there's no organizational shift or change in terms of. How we're governed by you. A resolution has some scope, but it's typically more limited, it wouldn't be impacting the board's policy book. Change your policy.
I agree, I also think that the general public and parents and families that are directly affected. Are probably not gonna read the policy and feel reassured by that necessarily.
Could we issue a communication if we do adopt a policy to let people know, like, social communication? And say, hey, blah, 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 whatever it might be, and put something behind it so that it functions almost like a resolution type of thing, but it's explained that we have policy. I mean, I don't know, I, you're right, there, part of this is, we can't stop what's happening, but we can make it really clear by doing this. That we are not gonna stand for certain actions, that we are vocally against it, we're putting things in place and I, there is. Like we've heard, speaking, there is comfort for the community to hear that something is being done. So it's, it's not just, um, what is the word, like a. Oh my God, what are they, it's not just like this is, you know, just.
A rel booster.
Yeah, no, it, it, there's a difference there, so yeah, like, I think the polit- maybe communicating that and then we can talk about that, I think that would be important.
We could maybe roll some of the language from a resolution standpoint to, and to, I, I think we all could look this over and come with notes about. What we wanna do.
So I'm just curious. When are we supposed to provide our notes for that?
For which one?
To December fourth, the, if you guys are gonna look over the NDA ones.
It was handed to us by Drew.
Yeah. Are we com- aren't we combining that into our policy?
Well, that hasn't been decided, so I guess what I heard by one person I thought was, hey, are we, are we gonna evaluate, like, look at that? Couple people would say, hey, I might look at that and to bring that to my conversation at the policy meeting.
Right.
That's what I heard one group say.
Yeah, that's how I.
Others said, hey, do we wanna do this or not, and if we, whatever. Formula or whatever the policy ends up being, regardless of will we change or not, to Kristen's point, people aren't always as aware of what we're doing for that. Can we make some sort of declarative statement or press, you know?
Yeah, I'd be more inclined personally to like get the policy where it needs to be, and then if you wanna discuss how we're communicating that outward. That's like a follow-up discussion to that. Which could happen in that meeting.
Yeah.
Depending on where we land.
Okay.
Okay. December second.
All right.
Just so board members know, we usually have these meetings around four o'clock. Right here.
Typically, it's been four, yeah, begins at four o'clock in the here.
Yeah. But if it gets adjusted, you guys will post.
Of course, yep.
Yep, okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the input. All right, item nine, eight, nine point one, administration comments.
Okay, uh, I'll keep this brief, um. All right, um, so everybody, November is a month, often a month of reflection and gratitude for me, um. Whether it's gratitude for our veterans, raising awareness for those who have battled various forms of cancer and recognition, awareness month for some forms. Um, to celebrating, uh, Native Americans and their rich history in our country and, of course, board member appreciation. Uh, which to, board member appreciation day was on November fifteenth, this past Saturday, um. So I wanna thank everyone on the board for your service to our students, our employees, our families, and to making BPS one oh one a phenomenal school district. You have a very in- incredibly difficult role that you do for absolutely free, but at a cost of your time. Uh, and so I just appreciate, uh, you, your work and continuing to push the organization to always try to be better. Now, on that note, to close, there are some examples of where from within the Batavia and BPS community, we have had some great highlights recently. Just wanted to share some positive, uh, vibes as I close out, um. Holly was kind enough to share with me some amazing record number, uh, re- record breaking numbers of how we are helping BPS families right now in our community. Especially as we come around like the winter season, right? Our weekend backpack numbers, uh, who we do partner with Chapel Street Church. Have currently thirty-five students and a hundred sixty-five people receiving bags and backpacks of food to help them during this time of need. Um, this is the highest number we've ever recorded, um, so super proud of all the efforts that are going on and thank you. Uh, the program has received four thousand dollars in donation along with actual food items that still continue to come in. So if you can spread the word, please do, tell them we're, everyone's still taking donations. Also, the Holsel Homes and Chip and Batavia have created blessing baskets. And that program currently has one hundred three families signed up to receive a basket next Tuesday. Around one hundred baskets have been sponsored and twelve of these baskets are being donated by Batavia's own BPS staff. Um, ten of them are from our, our colleagues in the BPA, our BEA. And two of them are from within our own RJAC curriculum and instruction department here at the district office. And then we also, um, have information about shop with a cop program. Um, that program is working with getting kids signed up for program, anticipating anywhere from twenty-five to thirty, uh, students, kids. Uh, in that program this year, and lastly, adopt a family program, um, this year we'll have record numbers with this program as well. Uh, we are gonna be hitting capacity and we'll have children, all the children will be covered, even though we're hitting our new number. Um, and they're gonna be hovering right around three hundred seventy children, which is, uh, huge. And so, uh, and then our business and finance department at the district office putting together stockings, uh, to, to give to every family from the program this year. So on that note, um, appreciate all the conversation tonight, um, looking forward to us continuing to do our work together here. That's all I got.
I just have one question, so, uh. Drew mentioned earlier that there is a process for getting feedback from the BEA. And I don't know if, I'm new and I don't know how long I can use that excuse that I'm new, but I just, I am unaware of what that process is.
It's not a specific process, but there is a history of collaboration between the administration, you know, and, and that. So I think dependent on what the issue is, it gets addressed in a different way, different ways, so. I think that part of that is like the, the presentation. I think that part of that is like the, the presentations that are coming that were mentioned, they're, they're doing the principals and some staff, and then we can collaborate with. Tom on trying to determine what additional information we want to get, seek information from, for them to provide backups from the staff.
We did ask them for the December fourth meeting, I do recall, and I don't know if we're talking about the same thing, but. That when they come and do their building presentations, that part of that was gonna be the cell phone policy, and that we were looking for staff feedback. Sure, I don't know if that's what you're referring to, but like where we're getting staff voices to say like, do, does it, but there was like three or four questions specifically that we. Wanted to hear from staff, and then for admin of those different buildings to bring back to us, because that way in our. December regular meeting, we could effectively decide, do we need to have a, a discussion, policy update, policy discussion on cell phones? So, yeah, yeah, 'cause I, I remember.
This must be the process.
So, uh, i- i- in particular, what I was talking about, um, specific to the cellphone thing, uh, any potential changes to policy have an impact on our working conditions. And so what I was trying to convey to the board was, uh, to, to your point, staff feedback would be like of paramount importance to anything related to anything. Let alone a policy like that. So, when I say that the BEA is able to like provide that kind of more formal feedback, we have mechanisms within our organization that we can do that. But I think to Craig, your point, there's also plenty of mechanisms within the district itself where we can do that too, it's just really a matter of. What's gonna be most conducive to data that you need to make informed decisions, I guess.
We're looking for your guys' feedback to, we can't decide, I think we were, our discussion was, we don't know if the policy is working without hearing from staff.
Correct.
Our hope was that admin was going to be able to speak to you all and get that feedback. So that they could present it at the December fourth meeting, whenever the building presentations are. And that way, we had those couple of weeks to like digest it and arrive at a regular December meeting, to have a really like in-depth discussion, like. Do we need policy, but it would be with your all's voices, staff voices. So I don't, do, I don't think we gave Tom instruction on how to do that, though, I think that's up to Tom to do, or admin to do.
A- and that wasn't necessarily my takeaway from the last meeting, hence the, the, you know, ask that these types of decisions are made with, with that in mind. So, um, again, we, we have ways that we can do that within the association, we have mechanisms in the district, we can address that too, but. As I said, not just cellphone policy, any decisions made by the Board of Education that impact our working conditions, how we're able to support our kids, support our staff. I would hope that's a, a shared interest, that, that feedback comes from the association as well.
Thank you. And I appreciate this too, that, you know, that they came with some information for us to digest, so. That's all.
Okay, um, just a few comments here, uh, first of all, uh, a big appreciation to Finn and Max for the Howie's Heroes. Continue to champion the celebrations in hearing from our students, um, all the good things that they are doing. So appreciate that, um, I wanna thank Mister Kim and any others that are here in attendance. If you're a veteran, thank you for your service and appreciate uh, everything that you have done for us. And, um, I wanna mention, I, I did go to the Little Mermaid, I think it was mentioned earlier, and, um, just a very spectacular show. I thought I was like in Chicago watching a. A play because of the, the staging really was quite, um, quite impressive, right? With some of the wiring works, uh.
Kyle was like thirty feet in the air.
Flying around, so, um, kudos to, um, the musicians, this, the stage crew and the actors for. For that effort on The Little Mermaid, so a great job by everyone involved, and. I think that, oh, um, thank you to those that came and spoke today, um, really do appreciate you taking the time to express your views. Um, it is very helpful, and I'll speak just for myself, it is very helpful to hear, uh, the community feedback on, um. Uh, the various issues that we're facing, so, uh, thank you for those that, that came out and spoke.
So yeah, so thank you to Mister Buckley for inviting, I'm sure you all got the invites for the Veterans Assembly for the eighth grade at RMS, so I did attend, it was nice. So thank you, the veterans that, uh, served, appreciate it. Um, also, I saw that RMS has a food bank, like in their school, I think that's kinda cool, so I appreciate that. Um, happy Native American Heritage Month, and then I hope everyone has a healthy and safe Thanksgiving.
Yeah, so I kinda echo what my colleagues are saying here, but, um, I was also went to Little Mermaid and I had the exact same reaction you did. And my understanding is there's only two adults involved in that entire production, so, uh, just incredible work. And I wanted to thank everybody who's here tonight, who stuck through to the end, uh, every, we had a lot of teacher presentations tonight. Uh, we just, well, we just had a lot of presentations, and, uh, I appreciate how much work everybody puts. Into providing detail, but making it understandable, so that we can understand where we're headed and what the challenges are. And, uh, then the last thing I'll say is I know with Thanksgiving, it is a time of celebration, but it also is, um. Giving a very hard time for a lot of people, I know a lot of people are suffering, and I feel like, uh, people in the district are working along with other partners. To do what they can to uplift the community and provide, be a source of strength. For example, uh, I think someone mentioned, maybe Tom just did, about Chip in and Hozel, uh, with the food baskets, we'll be out there Tuesday night handing out. Thanksgiving dinners to people, um, and that's just one of many, many things that are going on that, uh, you know, a lot of people are doing a good work, are doing the best they can. So I just wanna say thank you to everybody who put in all that hard work, and also that, uh, we finish out into the break strong, and everyone has a safe Thanksgiving.
Uh, thank you to all of you that have stuck through since a very late night, um, I appreciate everyone who wrote in, um, who showed up. Um, who's held discussions, I mean, we've had, I would put it as like three hundred fifty voices that have directly wrote to us, spoken to us. That's really powerful, and I just, that's really important that we advocate for our children, because they can't do it themselves. And with this in mind, you know, with this specific topic, I had actually wrote a note, 'cause I didn't know how today was going to go, and I've been really open about my feelings, but. As someone who is Latina from, I come from immigrant family, an adult, just observing what happens. And all that's holding the space for it is hard enough, and I would do anything to make sure that our children are as protected as possible. And so that's where my strong feelings come from and, and whatnot, so having all of you show up for every one of these kids is just. Absolutely amazing, I wanna also, just on the side, note, thank our rapid response team members, I'm also on there, but I don't get to go out on foot, and. That is where we see a lot of movement, and I mean, it's, it's heavy, it's heavy, so our community has shown up for our kids in so many ways, whether it be speaking here. Or doing that, I just wanna really express my gratitude, um, you've been heard and seen. I think that also I wanted to touch on the staff coming up for the committee updates, and like all of, all of the involvement on that. To Drew's point, so like I think what we've been asking for is like the voices at the table. Hearing the staff, I mean, they're working with admin, and you guys are always here giving the voice, but it's an extra help to hear from the people who are in the classrooms too. In addition to what you guys do with them, and so that is really helpful for me personally, I really enjoyed that. And to latch on to that, um, there is something I'm gonna throw out there in our already busy season, student voice, we cannot. I'm gonna hold firm on this, we cannot do our work without student voice at this table, and we are missing it, we are missing it, we try to bring it, we try to say, hey, I talk to the community. Just as much as we need staff voices at the table. So, I want to propose a discussion, it can wait until after the new year, to, um, talk about student board members. I have seen some amazing districts do it. Spencer, I hope that if we ever do it, you are someone who will maybe join on, I mean, we have a youth that is so caring and involved. So well-spoken, so just like ready to join in, and I just would like to have that discussion at some point to see if there's interest. In that topic, and again, I'm not trying to load us up right this moment. But if there is anything that I would want to leave this board at any time with, and, and note that I feel good about is student voices at this table. Because we are adults through our perspective, every single one of us here, I don't care what story you're telling, without them being at this table. We're ruining their perspective, we're ruining their voice, and we're taking that over. I have seen the progress that starts to go towards that, we talk about absenteeism, we've talked about belonging. We don't get that unless we have those voices that can connect, peers will talk to peers, and they'll be able to understand certain things that we will never get, so. I just wanna put that on, I don't know if we could like throw on an agenda for discussion after the new year, but wherever you guys think it might fit. I'm not asking for like, I think we need to do, do we need consensus to put it on agenda?
I, I, I mean, I'm just curious of other people, I wanna make sure people wanna talk about it, so if anybody has any objection to it, you know, then let's. Talk about it, but if everybody's like, sure, let's put it on for discussion, let's do it.
And I just wanna really quick, we have ambassadors, and they are phenomenal people, and they did bring up an issue. I just feel like we task our ambassadors with more celebratory, which I love having, but they're not at the table, and just to be clear. Student board members do not vote, okay, they are just part of discussions, they are at the table for these discussions, for their feedback, they're able to collect from their peers. But they don't vote, and we can have a broader discussion, but that is the reason why I don't feel like our ambassadors necessarily take a place of, um, student board members.
The only reason I was asking is I wanna make sure that we're all, yes, we all like, that we're gonna have a good conversation about that. And it can be a dialogue, that's all I'm asking, is I'm not necessarily saying, hey, are we passing this or not right now? I mean, I, does anybody have any opinions or would support that?
I have brought it up, I think in the pa- maybe not, um, at the board table, but I think I sent Tom an article one time. Um, I think, was it Woolmette that did it recently? Somewhere around, within the last six months did it, and it was really interesting, I read an article about it.
At Triple I, they have them often, um, as sessions, and I remember I, the one time I was able to go, and it was amazing, it was amazing.
I'm definitely interested.
Alright, yeah, I'd be open to discussing it after we get through all this.
Yes, holiday.
So, after the new year, let's.
Yes, I got it in my.
January, February-ish. If it, when it gets closer, if you don't mind, kind of just. Either put it on our list and then one of, somebody helps remind, remind me that yes, it needs to be on there.
Okay, thank you. All I have.
Uh, I will just say that I'm feeling very grateful today for all of the community support. Uh, for everybody that contacted us, um, regarding the ICE. The ICE policy crafting, I, I'm really grateful to live in a town, um, that is crafting policies to let our Latine community know. That we acknowledge you and we will do all we can to protect you from violence in our city and on our properties, so. I'm very grateful to, that we're taking that action, and to be part of that. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody coming as well, I won't, um, I'll keep it short, 'cause we also have a closed session to go to. Um, thank you to veterans, it comes from a, a point in my heart, I'm a, I'm an Air Force brat, so I also appreciate the entire families. That grew up and moved and went overseas and to various parts of the country, um, and, and lived with their family members that were gone for long periods of time, so. I, uh, think about that often, and then appreciate, um, all the kind of really in-depth information that was provided today. Maybe I'll try to work on spreading that out a little bit if we can, just to keep the meeting a little, uh, more of a tempo, but I, it was well appreciated, so thank you very much. We are going to close session today, um, so I am going to, we're going to be adjourned, we have no action after the meeting today. So, I certainly can make your decisions about whether you say or not. But we're probably gonna be another thirty, forty-five minutes to an hour, so, um, thank you to everybody that attended, um, and we are going to move, let me get my. So, yep, again, if you say or go, so if there are anything else, we will get adjourned, so. The time is eleven oh four, and I will ent- entertain a motion to move to closed session. Wow, I didn't finish the sentence, but I appreciate the intensity of it. As allowed under open meetings act for the purpose of exception five ILCS one twenty slash two C one, so moved by Katie? Second by Kristen. Alright, Cindy, please lead us in a roll call though.
I didn't hear anything, everybody's saying.
Yes.
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 Alright, bathroom break, and see you guys in the circle.